All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. And at this time, we will ask to see if -- I'm sorry. Is there anything to be reported out from closed session?
No, there's nothing to be reported out of closed session today.
Very good. We'll move to the invocation, which will be given by trustee Prendergast.
Okay, I would like to combine tonight's invocation with a point of personal privilege and take a moment to point out why I have all this hair on my upper lip. You may or may not know that in Australia, a mustache is called a "moe." Back in 1999, a group of men from Melbourne, Australia conceived of the idea of "Moe-ember" to establish a Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. The idea is that men begin growing a moe on November 1st to get their friends and colleagues to ask them what the heck they're doing and why they just started to grow one. This begins the conversation about supporting research to find a cure. Some, like myself, even register at www.moe-ember.com to solicit donations to this cause, and you can even rate my moe. Why is this important? Well, according to the American Cancer Society, other than skin cancer, prostate cancer is the most common cancer in American men. The latest American Cancer Society estimates for prostate cancer in the United States for 2011, about 240,000 new cases of prostate cancer will be diagnosed. About 33,000 men will die of prostate cancer. About one man in six will be diagnosed with prostate cancer during his lifetime. More than 2 million men in the United States who have been diagnosed with prostate cancer at some point are still alive today. Prostate cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death in American men, behind only lung cancer. About one man in 36 will die of prostate cancer. However, the news isn't all bad. A couple of weeks ago, there was a report that a possible vaccine for breast and prostate cancer may be ready for clinical trials. Potential for a cure for both these killers is encouraging indeed. So I'd like us to please take a moment of reflection for all those in our lives that could benefit from these advances. Thank you, and please remain standing for the pledge.
All right, trustee Jay is not with us tonight. He was to lead us in the pledge, so I will take that job. Please join with me in honoring our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will now move to a presentation of resolutions. And the president of Saddleback College will come forward and present a resolution to Dr. Georgina Guy. Would you come forward, please, Dr. Guy?
Okay, I'll start reading the resolution. Dr. Georgina Guy, recipient of the Outstanding Service Award from the California Community College Extended Opportunity Programs and Services Association, and that's also known as EOPS. Are you ready for me to start reading?
Yeah, go ahead.
Whereas Dr. Georgiana Guy, the coordinator of Saddleback College, EOPS, which is Extended Opportunity Program and Services/Care Department, director of CalWorks, and a counselor, is the recipient of the Outstanding Service Award from the California Community Colleges Extended Opportunities Programs and Services Award Association. Whereas Dr. Guy has demonstrated amazing leadership and advocacy for EOPS students for as many years as a counselor and coordinator, has contributed to the California Community College, EOPS-A, as a volunteer, and is currently the regional representative for Region 8 and whereas Dr. Guy implemented a fully paperless system in all of the programs she coordinates and ensured that all EOPS students are on the My Academic Plan system, which is a great system that we have, making this group of students the first to move fully to online student education plans. And whereas, to help students struggling with academic success, Dr. Guy launched the EOPS Student Success Committee, providing an intervention process that requires students facing challenges and academic issues to meet with Dr. Guy and the counselor significantly and positively impacting students and aiding in informed programmatic changes. And whereas Dr. Guy's colleagues commend her productivity, perseverance, and compassion, stating that she is ethical and fair and is focused on maintaining and improving the quality services provided in her programs, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Dr. Georgina Guy for her outstanding dedication to students and well-deserved recognition as the recipient of the California Community Colleges Extended Opportunity Program and Services Association Outstanding Service Award. And this is a statewide recognition. She's the one person who won this in the state, so we congratulate her. So Grace Garcia, can you please read out the roll call vote? Thank you so much.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Miltucher.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Dr. Guy, would you introduce your family, if you have any, and make a couple comments?
Thank you. Thank you. I do have my family here. I have my daughter Justine, my husband Paul, and my son Evan. And Evan is also a student here at Saddleback College. I got an email, and they said I had to say a few words. And if you know me, the podium is not the place that I dream of being. But here I am today, so I will try to be grateful and sure in my words. Dear ladies and gentlemen, I am sincerely grateful for the recognition from the Board of Trustees, administrators, and peers. I am lively honored to have been selected as the Outstanding Service Award recipient sponsored by EOPS-A. I should admit, I was a bit surprised when I learned about my nomination. With that false modesty, I feel that other directors, counselors, and staff are also worthy of this award. However, I realize that I cannot divide it since there's only one per year. So again, I want to thank you. I believe there are several qualities that has brought me here tonight. These qualities include dedication, perseverance, professionalism, and the potential and capacity to grow under challenging circumstances. I also try to create a climate in which people are motivated, given their best, so they are engaged, creative, and successful in their work with students, peers, and administrators. I am also open to new ideas, new technology, and information. I think it is the key to success. The world's changing so rapidly that we must keep abreast of new trends, changes in our educational system and to be in tune with the students that we serve. Participating in active positions locally and statewide, it is beneficial to my work, our students, and our programs. I want to express my gratitude to my family, who supports me in all my undertakings, to Saddleback College, and to everyone that I work with every day to make our program successful. I am very pleased to have received this award. Thank you for your support and for your trust in me. I will do my best to represent our college, students, faculty, and all the work that I do locally and statewide. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Very good, very good. And congratulations. We are now at public comments, and we have requests to speak from one -- no. Yes, we have a request from one person. Catherine Doe. And Ms. Doe, come forward to the podium. We have two minutes.
I'm here to comment in regard to the Oxford program. And recently, which was yesterday, I had a very brief interview with Suki Fisher about that, and I wasn't pleased with her comments, but basically, she said it wasn't available to me. Now, I did put in an application on the day it was supposed to leave in the springtime for last year, and I was previously accepted. And this is an issue that's ongoing, and also serving the needs of older students in terms of the curriculum or the ability to help teach, chaperone, or otherwise help out with the tour. And there's a copy of the letter, which I'll give to the Board of Trustees. Now, I have a question in regard to a previous agenda item, the district-wide goals and the strategic plan, and it's the Objective 2.1. And it's increase the rates of completion for degrees, certificates, and transfer readiness by 5% annually. Excuse me, but I have an allergy thing right now with my voice. And I wonder, you know, what is the completion rate for certificates? Because I've tried on this on two of them for a long period of time, and my needs are not being served, and the financial aid situation is also terrible. And then I have another question. You know, this goes back 30 years with not being accommodated and not having access to the programs. And rather, you know, than litigation and negative publicity, you know, a meeting to discuss all this would be helpful, and a good-paying job such as the chancellor's. If you look at my credentials, you might find out that that might be appropriate. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we are now at reports, and we'll start with board reports. And trustee Meldow, you'll be first.
Thank you. Well, as we move closer to the holidays, I think that those of us on the board have many things to be thankful for, especially our fine chancellor, the faculty, the staff, the students, and especially the members of the community that turned out so well at the community forum that looked at student success. That was just a terrific, terrific experience. Also, I was able to attend the Veterans Day ceremony here at Saddleback College. Thank you, President Todd Burnett, for asking me to attend and being a gracious host, as you always are. That was quite a thrilling and touching ceremony, so I appreciate that. I got choked up when they played taps. So again, a really good and important function. We also, members of the board, had a chance to meet with one of the committee members from the accreditation committee. That went quite well, as I'm sure you'll hear, and we're looking forward to the full report coming down. And last of all, I will be attending the nursing pinning at Saddleback on December 6th. The nursing program is very close to my heart, and I look forward to seeing all the nurses get their pins. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Miltucher.
Do I push my mic on? Have to push your button. Okay, thank you. First of all, I echo everything trustee Meldow said, and I was at the same meetings and planned to attend the nursing pinning ceremony also. This is a highly unusual thing for me to say, but the home where my 91-year-old mother lives is going to be watching this Board of Trustees meeting this weekend. So I just have to say, hi, Mom. Her name is Francis Green, and she's 91 years old, and her two best friends live there with her, and we call the three of them the Golden Girls, because they're just like the Golden Girls. And the staff is wonderful, so hi to all of you, okay? Now I can move on. I also want to thank trustee Fuentes for coming to the meeting. I know how difficult it was, and we really appreciate his coming. And it was his idea to name this room the Ronald Reagan Board of Trustees Room, and all the trustees agreed to do that. And he also donated a bust of Ronald Reagan that he had, and it's put in a beautiful location right outside the boardroom, and we just put a plaque on it that says the name of the artist that actually made the bust, I'm sorry, that sculpted the bust, and that it was donated by trustee Tom Fuentes. So we thank him so much for that. And also, I did ask trustee Prendergast why he grew his mustache, and he said he would tell me later, so now I know. So that was very interesting. We also, just briefly, one more thing. We also attended, we had a student, and I think this was set up by President Todd Burnett. We had a Student Success Task Force meeting at Saddleback College, which was very, very informative, and three people from, I won't read their names off, but three people from the task force came down and heard testimony. And my big thing is the Emeritus Institute. And we will not cancel the Emeritus Institute at Saddleback College or Irvine Valley College ever, but we're worried about it getting funded. So if it's not funded, people will have to pay for it themselves. But we're fighting this, and the people that spoke, I didn't speak because the people that speak more eloquently, I've found, always are the students, because they know I have a vested interest. I want to keep the Emeritus Institute going. And one of the people that spoke was a very old friend of mine. His name is Cal Delafield, and he is a former community college administrator for many years back east, and he spoke eloquently about how much the Emeritus Institute means to him and the other people, and how it keeps them healthy and out of nursing homes, and it's a very inexpensive cost for the state to do this, for the joy it brings to all of our seniors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, trustee Prendergast.
I don't know what astounds me more, that this is televised or that people watch it. I didn't know. I really, honestly, I've been here almost a year, and I had no idea.
We'll get you up to speed soon.
Oh, man. I'm going to have to watch myself. I just want to say, I attended the Veterans Day ceremony at IVC, and that, too, was touching. I don't have anything to compare it to, other than the one we do at Beckman, but it was very, very neat, and the fact that it's run by the veterans themselves is really, really touching and incredible to see. I also attended the college-wide forums that we had at IVC and Saddleback, and those were really, we were really impressed in how well-attended they were. But I don't want to steal too much of what Nancy was probably planning to say about that, so I'll let her take the rest. As well as the Student Success Task Force, great turnout and a great view of democracy in action. The 4,000 letters and the people speaking, you could tell that the committee has some more work to do, to adjust for some of those opinions and concerns. I also forgot to mention, there is still 12 or 13 days left in November. You can start your moe, and there is an incentive or an urging of those in the public eye, and now that I know it's televised, I can say that there's a lot of people watching that can take part in that. Also, we received some kind of praise and accolades from President Lynn Davis of the Tustin Unified School District Board at Monday's meeting. His son attended UCI and IVC, and he was very, very complimentary that some of the same, he had some of the same professors, that some of our professors are at the four-year level as well, and that speaks highly of the quality that we have at IVC and Saddleback in our district and ATUP as well. So I thought you guys would all like to know that you were praised for your hiring practices. So congratulations.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just start out with the Student Success. I believe it was called a town hall. Isn't that correct? And it was basically for most of Orange County, or maybe even some of LA County, and we had attendance from all over, and that was very rewarding to see. So I attended that, and I appreciate Todd, President Burnett, for setting that up for us. That was great. So I understand that was televised, and it's also available on webinar and a website. Maybe that's something we could also post on our internet, so people could go to that if they'd like to. And I was unable to go to our two college veterans events. I was called out of town rather unexpectedly. However, I do want to recognize Saddleback College Veterans Service Center for attending an event that I put together in San Clemente to honor our veterans on the 9th, and that was attended by President Burnett, and I see our director, Terrence Nelson, there, and two of our veterans, and it was great. We had certificates from Assemblywoman Diane Harky, Congressman Calvert, and Senator Mark Wyland to present to them. So that was very nice. Of course, I'm a big sports fan, and I did attend several college, Saddleback College football games and Saddleback College women's soccer. The previous event, a previous meeting, I reported that Saddleback Women's Soccer played IVC women's soccer. But anyway, that was exciting. So I will move on now and ask trustee Tom Fuentes to give a report.
Thank you very much. Is that on yet?
No, push his mic, would you?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President. I want to say it's a joy to be here with all of you today. It has been some several months since I've had the chance to join you. This is the 15th week of my hospice care, and normally, I spend my time at home, in bed, and my hospice nurses and doctors come to visit me rather than I have the opportunity to get out to see you. But even though I'm there and not with the opportunity to get out and about, I still continue to receive all of the information that the district shares with all the trustees to read our agendas and to know what is before the board. Likewise, I have the hours and hours of time to share on my laptop and in the newspapers to view the crises of the state of California, the fiscal crises. We're a part of that, and I don't think we should ever forget it. I think that because we live in the abundantly lucrative community of South Orange County, we think that we're free from that. But we're under the gun, just like the rest of the state of California. The fiscal policies implemented by this board have to remain fiscally conservative, or we will pay the price, just like the rest of the state of California. I think we're on a precipice. I think we're in great danger. I think there has been change in this district, which takes us in a direction different than we have had in years past, and for that, we will one day pay a price. So when I can get up out of bed and make my way here, I want to come and share with you that I'm still engaged, I'm still watching, and I hope those that watch over the television set, these meetings, will observe that this district is still very much engaged and cautious, absolutely, of necessity so that our fiscal stability continues. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Fuentes. We do appreciate the many emails that you send out on your laptop. Trustee Lang.
Yes, my comments will be brief this evening. I just wanted to bid one and all a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving holiday, and those of you that aren't going to be at home this holiday season, I hope your travels are safe.
And student trustee.
Yes, also, my comments are going to be brief tonight. I do plan on attending the Nurses Program Pinning. I think it's a great organization, and I know a handful of aspiring nurses that are going to our school. And secondly, I will be going online immediately after this and voting for trustee Prendergast's moe. Thank you, as a ten, of course.
Well, we would encourage you to talk to the two college ASG presidents, to encourage that, too. Okay, thank you. And I did neglect to mention the forums that we had at both colleges, which were just great. There was great attendance, and we do appreciate that, and I think that we have that now as a regular scheduled item on our calendar, so we'll be looking forward to that, too. All right, we now move to the chancellor's report.
There's already been several mentions tonight regarding student success in the town hall meeting that was held here. And it just happens that tonight, our colleges are going to report to the board, have a discussion item regarding student success. This presentation doesn't really follow, had been timed, because of the town hall meeting. It just happened that was there also. Really, we began planning all of this when we started reviewing the Vision 2020 Plan. And so if we go back there, you know, almost a year, and so tonight, the colleges are going to talk to the board about their thinking and their plans, and I'm sure we'll have a number of more meetings and discussions as we refine the plans that we have. Next month, the colleges are going to report on the programs that they plan to offer, or they would like to offer, at ATUP. And so you'll hear a nice report. I've heard the report already, and it'll explain to you what IVC and Saddleback have planned. And then in the January meeting, I'm going to bring back an action item and ask the board to approve the plans that have been laid out by the colleges.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we are at board requests for reports. Are there any trustees asking for a board report to come to us? Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I assume this is the right place for this. This is the first one I've ever done. So in light of yesterday's paper, which in North County, or I'm sorry, it's my old place, Orange County Register, they had the article about how the county is planning on grabbing $73 million from property taxes, basically taking it out of the hands of the public schools, and the devastating effects that that would have. The county supervisors are under the impression that that money would get backfilled by the state of California with all the money they have flowing in their coffers. And so in today's paper, there was some outcry to that, both from county superintendent Bill Habermill and Scott Lay, president of the Community College League of California. And I think it might be fitting, if we could look into possibly having a resolution or some sort of statement, supporting the other community colleges, because it's my understanding that Supervisor Campbell and the rest of the supervisors are incorrect, that there's anything that said that the state would backfill any money they took away from them. And while it may or may not affect us, we're not sure yet. We certainly know the devastating effect it would have on our sister schools in the Orange County area. So I would like to see that, if that's possible.
So you're actually not really requesting a report. I mean, you're asking for a resolution to come back.
Yeah, look at a resolution or something that we could sign and support.
To oppose this fund grab. So, all right, I guess we need to vote on that request for a report or resolution. So we'll take up the resolution when it comes back on the agenda. So let's vote, please. Trustee Fuentes, you vote, please. Could you help him with his vote?
I don't quite understand what we're voting on.
We're voting on just having an agenda item, which would be a resolution to support the other schools who are going to be affected by this grab of funds from taxes that would impact the districts supported by that.
Well, I think we would want to look at asking the administration to bring us back a study as to how we might have a plan to make cuts necessary if we don't get the funds.
Okay.
This entitlement mentality of, let's keep ours, doesn't get at solving problems. It just says we're part of the greed. What we need to do is be looking for solutions in this crisis time in our state.
Okay, I'm sure when they bring the resolution back, they will have that input for us, and at that time, we will discuss. at that time, we will discuss before we actually vote on the resolution. So we're in the middle of a vote, and if you're going to vote, please do. Okay, it carries with, let's see, four, one, two, three, four, five yes votes, one no vote, and a student advisory yes vote, one absent vote. All right, thank you very much. And I'm going to ask for a report to come from our two college presidents on the progress we are, where we are at with student learning outcomes that we need to accomplish by 2012 to 2013. And if you could bring that back to us as a part of, you're going to be making a report similar to this in any way, but if you could come back with an actual report at the next meeting on where we are in terms of the progress we are, have made, and what we need to do to complete that. So with that request for report, I would make a motion, and I'd appreciate a second. Second. All right, so let's vote on that request for report. Trustee Fuentes, did you want to comment? No? I thought I heard you. Okay, let's vote. Okay, carries with six yes votes, one student advisory yes, and one absent. All right, we are now at our discussion items. And before we go to our discussion items, I'm going to advance 6.1 because we have some consultants here who we need to get off the clock here. So we'll go forward with 6.1, and then we'll go to our discussion items. So we have a presentation by the Chancellor on this before we go to, you'll introduce the people who are going to make a presentation. Chancellor.
Okay, just as an introduction for the audience here, every 10 years, as we all know, the federal government conducts a census in the United States. And there are requirements that after the census is done, that we have to evaluate our populations and in our trustee areas to see if the populations within the trustee areas are still appropriate, and if they're out of balance, make changes, also to ensure that there is compliance with the State and Federal Voting Rights Act. So this year was the time for this study. We've again engaged the Center for Demographic Research at Cal State Fullerton. They did our last study when we changed boundaries. And so with us tonight is Deborah Depp, Director of the Center for Demographic Research, and also Ben DeMayo, who is counsel with Woodruff, Spradlin, and Smart, who did the legal analysis of research material and has given us advice about what we need to do. And with that, Deborah, would you proceed?
Absolutely. Now I know how to get bumped up on the agenda. I've got to keep that one.
Deborah, could you move the mic closer to your mouth so we can hear you a little better?
Sure. Okay, I can raise the volume of my voice as well, so just let me know, flag me down. And I have to embarrass somebody, one of your audience members today, Professor Dan Walsh, sitting over on the far side of Geography, I believe it is.
Could you stand up, please? Okay, be accounted for and stand.
Mr. Walsh was actually involved in your redistricting process 10 years ago as the CDR's lead map and GIS analyst. So we have some historical background here, too. Mr. Walsh is a wonderful man and an asset definitely to your district, so I congratulate you on that. Again, yes, we are here. Good evening, everyone. Because every 10 years, the district must undergo an analysis of the population numbers for each of their trustee areas. The district is required to do this using data from the Decennial U.S. Census. And the primary goal of the redistricting process is to have the population numbers for each of the trustee areas be as nearly equal as is possible. Now, the word "redistricting" is really a generic term that's used for this overall process, but within community college districts that elect trustees at large, but also require the trustees to live within specific geographic areas. The official term for what we generically call "redistricting" is actually rearranging the trustee area boundaries. But rearranging doesn't sound really nice, so we say "redistricting." The data that's used in this, the Public Law 94171 directs the U.S. Census Bureau to provide redistricting data that's needed by the 50 states for use in their redrawing districts for the U.S. Congress and state legislators. This is also the dataset used in redistricting efforts for virtually all public agencies, including community college districts. The Public Law file, redistricting dataset contains two main population categories. We have the total population by race and ethnicity, which is the data counting everyone that's living in that area, and then also the total population by 18 and over by race, ethnicity, and these are the population that are of age to vote. Since the goal is to have total population, numbers for each of the trustee areas be as equal as is possible, the primary variable used during the redistricting is total population. The latest data tool in the redistricting process is the data showing the population eligible to vote, that is, the citizen voting age population, also known as CVAP. So although the redistricting goal is equality of total population, and you are required to use the federal decennial census data as the basis for revising those trustee areas for Voters' Rights Act issues, which is something that's been enacted since your last redistricting process, the citizens' voting age population information is provided to you as supplemental materials and is included in your agenda packets. You have that data. The CVAP data is the total estimated population by race, ethnicity of U.S. citizens aged 18 and over. The data are from the U.S. Census Bureau's American Community Survey, which is a monthly household sample survey of about 250,000 across the nation. These are special tabulations at the 2,000 block group level, and it's disaggregated to the Census 2010 level. These will not match the 2010 census data, so if you're looking from table to table for the numbers to add up, they won't match, again, because these are estimates and they're over a five-year period of 2005 to 2008. The data is actually posted on the statewide database website, which is maintained by UC Berkeley. So that's all the background information. We'll move on to the good stuff. Before starting the process to arrange the boundaries, what you need to look at first is, do you actually need to? You're allowed to do it whether you want to or not, but you actually have to first evaluate if you have the need, if it's necessary for you to revise the numbers. So what we do is we start with the Orange County population. The orange circle is intentional. The population of the 2010 Decennial U.S. Census was 3,010,232 people. We calculated the district population, which is 906,946 people, or about 30.1% of the county population. Well, then what we do next is we have to calculate the target population. So we take the total population for the district and we divide it by the number of trustees, seven. Easy math, 129,564 becomes the target population for each of the trustee areas. So of course, the question is, how off were we? Where are we at? Well, it was more than a bit. This table shows the target area population for each of the seven trustee areas. You can see that trustee area one was off, oops, sorry, I'm looking for that cursor. We were off, over by about 13,000. Trustee area two, off by about 9,000. Three was under by 10,000. Four was over by 24,000. Five, under by 22,000. If we're doing the three bears, six was just about right, and then trustee area seven was under by 13,000. This is a map of the district and also the trustee areas. So again, trustee area one and two were over, six was under, as was seven. Four was over, and then three and five were also under. To look at, again, the need to actually undertake the redistricting process, this is a bar chart to actually help make it easier to see the differences with the population. To calculate the percentage spread, you take the lowest negative number, which would be 16.98%, you add it to the highest positive number, 18.8%, and we came up with a percentage spread of 35.78%. Though it's not in law anywhere, but it's generally accepted that if you have a percentage spread of under 10%, that's what we say is basically okay. You can look at other factors as well, but you want to have that number under 10%. So because you're at 35.78%, we knew that you had to actually do some work and adjust those trustee area boundaries. As you undertake a process to rearrange the trustee area boundaries, there are some criteria that may be taken into consideration, which may result in some variance within that 10% in population between each of the trustee areas. Examples are topography, geography, cohesiveness, contiguity, integrity, and compactness of territory and communities of interest. Racial and ethnic and language minority groups that are politically cohesive are considered communities of interest. And so another part of our analysis, which was specifically requested by the district, was to look at the racial and ethnic distribution of the population throughout the district. First, in comparison to the county as a whole, the district's population has a larger proportion of non-Hispanic whites at 60%. This actually does constitute a majority of the district population, whereas in the county, there is no single group that's larger than 50%. And at the county level, it hasn't been that way since about 2003. So since there's no group that's larger than 50% at the county level, they go through one type of redistricting process, but at the district level, you have only one group that really, in a sense, that is the majority of the district population. So this is followed by Hispanic and Latinos, then Asians, as well as non-Hispanic Blacks and all other race ethnicities. The following five maps show the population distribution by race, ethnicity throughout the district at the census block level. There are now nearly 12,000 census blocks in the district, which is about a third of the census blocks throughout the county. The population for each census block ranges from about, from zero population up to about 3,000 people. Anything shown in blue, the different blue colors, means that this group is more than 50% share of that block's population. So here, we're starting with the largest racial and ethnic group within the county, which is non-Hispanic whites. At 60% of the district population, they represent about 543,000 people. And as you can, it's very obvious to see this group is definitely the majority population throughout most of the district. The Hispanic and Latino populations comprise 18.2% of the district population at about 165,000. You can see that there are small concentrations in several parts of the district, primarily in Santa Ana, Tustin. This is unincorporated county, Lake Forest, Mission Viejo, down San Juan Capistrano. And this is actually, again, unincorporated county. Non-Hispanic Asians make up 16.6% of the district population, about 150,000 people. And you see that there are moderate concentrations of this group throughout Irvine, as well Irvine here, as well as in Lake Forest and Tustin. Now, this is the population distribution of the non-Hispanic Blacks throughout the district. It may look like you see nothing, there's something wrong with this map, there isn't. It's just that the non-Hispanic Blacks make up only 1.3% of the district population. So we're talking about 12,000 people out of 900,000. So they're really spread out and not concentrated throughout the district, but you do see some pockets in Lake Forest, here in the northern part of Laguna Niguel, Laguna Beach, and then down in San Clemente. We have the same occurrence throughout the district for the all other non-Hispanic population. This group is about 3.9% of the district population at about 35,000 people. And again, it's mostly shaded in yellow with small concentrations in unincorporated county north of Irvine, Lake Forest, again, unincorporated, this is Laguna Woods, and then down in Newport Beach, Newport Coast. So these are your existing trustee areas. And when you're looking at rearranging the boundaries to equalize the population and reduce that percentage spread of 35%, the input that was given on making those revisions to do things like keep cities as whole as possible, as often as we can, it's also easier for the trustees to say, "I represent all of Mission Viejo versus this portion and not this little," that type of thing. We had to clean up some small geographic areas. For example, Tustin, there was an annexation of a little area in Tustin, this little portion of, it's really outside of unincorporated, it's in unincorporated county, it's not in the city of Rancho Santa Margarita, it was a little awkward, there's really no population there, and a couple other small, little populated and unpopulated areas throughout the district. And then also to build from the existing trustee areas instead of starting from scratch and starting all over. So what we have is, these are the proposed trustee areas. Again, the black lines are the city boundaries, and the proposed trustee areas are shaded in the different colors. So we'll start with the north end of the district. We have trustee area two had too much population, they had to give some of it away. So six, who needed population, took some of trustee area two, and then we basically put, we had all of Tustin, Santa Ana, and North Tustin now in one district. Again, six needed some. We took parts of Irvine from number one and put it into trustee area six. Mission Viejo was made whole, which is, even though six was just about right, by making Mission Viejo whole, seven, and seven did need some population, we had to give some back to six, so that's why the portions of Irvine changed up here. Four had way too many folks during the last 10 years. A lot of the growth that happened in South County, although there was a tremendous amount of growth in the city of Irvine, we had basically all of Ladera Ranch be built within that timeframe, so we're looking at around 10,000 housing units. So again, a lot of people there. Three and five needed to add population. There was this little portion, if I toggle back and forth, you'll see this little portion of Laguna Hills, because there was a change in boundaries, was actually taken, go back, was added into five, so Laguna Hills was made whole. To make it easy again and simple, we chopped, in a sense, we just followed the five freeway down, and so a portion of four in San Juan Capistrano was added to trustee area five. And then three needed a little bit more, too, so what we did was we just added a portion of San Clemente down through and south of the five freeway. So with all of these changes, cities, again, were made whole or kept intact as much as possible, and now there are only four split cities instead of seven. And the culmination of these changes equate to a percentage spread of 6.58%. A quick summary of the next steps. Tonight, again, before you, you have your consideration of the approval of the trustee area alignment. Following a boundary approval, the Board action and resolution would be sent to the County Committee on School District Reorganization. At their meeting, their job really is to approve or deny your request for changes. And then after we get to that point, then what we do is we send all of this information in electronic and paper format, as needed, documentation to the county surveyor and to the registrar of voters, so that this would take effect for the next election in November 2012. And again, the recommended action before you tonight is that the Board adopt the proposed 2011 trustee area plan and a resolution petitioning for the realignment of a trustee area boundaries to be submitted for approval to the County Committee on School District Organization. Be happy to ask any questions, and I'll just pop right back to the map, just in case anybody asks any questions.
Trustee Pendergast? Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Mel Schicker?
Yeah, first of all, I was going to mention that when we gave this job to Trustee Pendergrass, we didn't realize that every district in the county was going to have to go through this, and he's going to have to vote on every single one. So his nothing job turned into a really heavy job, so we thank you for all the work you've done on this. We also want to thank you because it's an excellent job, and it looks really good. I really like the idea of keeping the cities whole. I live in Laguna Hills, and now I have the whole city of Laguna Hills, and I have the whole city of Laguna Woods, which is why I love the Ameribes Institute so much. And I have Laguna Niguel, too, so I'm very happy with my area. And I imagine all the other trustees are also. So you did a great job 10 years ago, so thank you for doing it again this year. Thank you.
Trustee Prendergast.
I just want to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly from the demographics, that we are going to remain at large because we are in no way in danger of being out of compliance with the California Voter Rights Act of 2000, as far as, you know, any demographic not being represented?
As the, yes, as the non-attorney in the room, I will not do, could we ask the attorney to stand up? I will defer to the attorney, yes.
He is getting paid.
I'm Ben DeMayo from Woodruff, Spradlin, and Smart. Again, we did analyze the district for California Voting Rights Act purposes, and really, there are two things. One is, as you can, oops, you can see from the maps, it showed the various ethnic populations. There really are not any concentrated groups of ethnic groups such that could really form a trustee area where they could elect a candidate of their own choice by themselves. The other thing is, actually, when you look at election results for your district and also for the cities and school districts within your boundaries, particularly Irvine, Tustin, looking at all the cities and all the school districts within your district for the last decade, the results actually are such that minority candidates have fared very well within your district. And so there does not, there does not appear to be any racially polarized voting that would cause, that would cause a... a successful challenge under the Voting Rights Act. Thank you.
And I just want to acknowledge that Ben DeMayo is formerly the county council for the county of Orange, so he has a wealth of experience, and I think you probably went through this with the county at some level.
Right, I, I worked on the county's redistricting in 1991, 2000 went in again this year, as well as a few other entities, so it's, it's a very interesting area, there's going to be, you know, as I know you all are aware, probably will be some more litigation throughout the state, but I, but I do think your district is in, is in good shape with regard to this issue.
Great. All right, trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much, and thank, nice to see you, Ben. Been a long, been a long time. Yes, certainly verify what Ben has made comment about the ethnicity issue in this district. I'm the first Hispanic elected trustee in this district, and the results at the polling places have confirmed, would verify what you just said. I noticed that the report doesn't give us a breakdown based on party registration, and I know this is a nonpartisan race, but we do have the tradition of the great American two-party system. It would be difficult for us to get those numbers as a part of a revised presentation, that you could send it back to us and show us party registration numbers that make up these districts.
It would take a bit more effort, we'd have to request that information from the registrar of voters and compile the data. In a sense, it is, it can be done, but it is a bit of a work effort to do that additional work.
It's not required, though.
Correct.
Okay.
And for the California Voting Rights Act issues, I could, again, defer, but when they're talking about those issues regarding that legislation, they're really looking at the racial and ethnic minority groups being politically cohesive, so even though may, they may tend to favor one party over another, it really is more about those racial and ethnic groups.
Could our attorney comment on that, please?
Again, there is no, you may consider political affiliation if you wish, and you don't have to. Again, it is a nonpartisan office, but that's really up, up to your board. I know it is outside, putting those figures together is outside the scope of work that you gave the Center for Demographic Research at this point, so I think it would probably require, not speaking for Deborah, but I think it would probably require an amendment to her contract to request that information.
And I'm sure yours too, so.
Well, my comment would be that I don't think it's a matter of our consideration, I don't think it's a matter of how we'd vote on dividing these districts. I mean, we can, we can adopt what we have tonight without having those specifics, but I think it is a point of interest, and I think it's something of full information and disclosure that would be well worthy of having, both for the trustees and for our constituents to know what the community political breakdown is. I frankly think in this entire redistricting effort that we've gone through for the Assembly, for the Senate, Congress, in these past several months, there's been an overemphasis on race and ethnicity, something that, as Americans, I think we look for colorblindness when we do things politically, and it has become so much an upfront issue, implementing, affecting the redistricting process, ethnicity and race. I don't care for it myself, so while I'm prepared to vote today, I'd like to see what it costs us to push a button at the registrar and be able to know what the political makeup of this effort is. Thank you.
All right, well, we can certainly have our administration come back with that, those figures. Any other trustees, I see now we're not switching to a comment, so I guess we are at the point of a vote for approving.
We got a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion, Anna.
So move.
Second.
Okay, move by trustee Melcheck or second by trustee Pendergras, let's vote. Let's see, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Motion carries with six yes votes, one student advisory vote, and one absent vote. All right, so we'll be in touch with you, our administration will, about getting additional information if that's the choice. Thank you very much. We will now move to our discussion items, and we're going to advance, again, 4.2 ahead of 4.1, because we have some students here who need to get to class. So could we have Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College accountability reporting for community colleges? Do you want to introduce this? Oh, okay, okay. Could you introduce yourself, please? I'm sorry, would our presidents like to present the speakers on this item, discussion item?
Absolutely so. At the podium right now is Christopher Tarman, and he is our research analyst at Irvine Valley College.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Chancellor Portner, thank you for having us here tonight to report on the 2011 ARC report. We came by last year to report last year's results, and I'm here to report. It's kind of a nice setup to go with the numbers here of what we look at, and then we're going to go into our college plans of how we address student success, and so being kind of a data-driven district and institution, we look at data constantly to see how we're doing, how we're measuring up what we're doing is effective, and so to just put a little color on what we're doing today, it's not a checkbox of, oh, we have to give you this report, these are just an idea of what types of indicators we look at to make sure we're on target of ensuring student success. To give a little bit more context to the numbers, and I did this last year, but I'm sure it didn't stay in your memories, it's, it's not the most activating type of topic, but I'm here to make it a little bit more interesting. What is nice about the slides that we put together today is to put the numbers in context. Whenever we throw up numbers, we talk percentages, what is hard to get your heads around is what do those numbers mean? And so what we've done is to be able to compare like apples to apples and not apples to oranges, and to give a trend as well, we've set up our charts that show how our college, what are indicators, how we look compared to our peer groups. And I don't want to get too technical about how that happens, there's a whole statistical methodology done by the state researchers that, that get to our peer grouping. It's not necessarily just where you are or proximity. For example, Irvine Valley College is only compared with Saddleback College on two, I think, of the seven indicators, for example, even though we're sister colleges and we're from the same part of Orange County. So just to give some background on that, the comparison is based on other environmental factors that impact the indicator. So for example, on the first, the first measure we talk about is student progress, and so it's, it's our, our transfer readiness, the percentage of that, what percentage of our students are getting certificates. There are other factors that are going to play into that as a figure. For example, the educational attainment of your population that you're drawing from. So obviously, if you're from an area that has a lot of college graduates, you know, your students are going to be probably a little bit better prepared, and you're going to have a better success rate compared to maybe other places in the state that, that have a different demographic that they're pulling from. And so I just wanted to kind of set that up as a trend, so each of the charts, when you'll see, you'll see a high mark, you'll see a low mark of the, of the peer group, a dotted line that shows the average of the peer group, and then where our colleges sit. So that gives you kind of a relative performance to our peer group, relative to high-low and the average. So that gives you kind of a little bit more information, just based on a visual, you can look at it and just kind of eyeball, okay, that's what that means, instead of saying, "That's 66 percent," and you have no idea what that means. So just as a quick summary, if I want to give a quick snapshot, this slide gives it across the seven different data points IVC scored at or above the peer group average in all seven categories, and well above the statewide averages on six out of the seven categories. And I can, I have those details in my notes, so if you want me to, you know, go to the statewide averages as another comparison point, I can give that. I'm looking at our three-year trends, six of the performance indicators show improvement, and only one of our indicators showed a slight decline from 72 percent to 70.4 percent, and that's our course completion rate for basic skills courses. One last little color to this, these aren't the only data points that we look at, we don't just look at seven and go, "Call it a day." This is just a jumping off point for us. We have a district-wide institutional effectiveness annual report that we also compile, our district researcher pulls that together, and so it takes these as a basis, and we go even deeper into that. And then, of course, we're always looking at other ways of cutting and slicing the data, so this is just the tip of the iceberg, just to get a comparative statewide of where we place. So our first indicator that, that kind of gets to student success is our student progress and achievement rates, and these include the percentage of first-time students who showed an intent to complete and who achieved any of the following outcomes in, in six years. So it's a six-year cohort look that we look at, so whether they transferred to a four-year college, we call that a success, or earned a degree, an AA or an AS, earned a certificate of 18 units or more, that's a successful outcome for us, or achieved transfer-directed status or transfer-prepared status. Transfer-prepared status is somebody who has completed 60 units, and I think college math and English, so they're right there, ready to transfer, and then the directed is a slightly different measure, let me get that out for you. So transfer-directed is the percentage of first-time students who have successfully completed both transfer-level math and English within the six years of entry, in a minimum of 12 units, transfer units. So these are all picked because the transfer-prepared and the directed, because these are tipping points. If you get to a certain point, then you're more likely to finish, and so we include that into the rate. As you can see, IVC is at 66.1 percent, which is our peer group high, which is above the average there, as you can see. The statewide average, just for comparison, is 52.7 percent. If I talk too fast, tell me to slow down, I'll slow down. I know we have a lot to get through, so, and Nicole Ortega, our Saddleback researcher, will be up next, so. The next indicator will be percentage of students earned, that earned 30-plus units, and again, this is another one of those tipping points, so if you get to halfway of the 60 units, you're more likely to, to get a successful outcome. Irvine Valley College was at 75.8 percent, the peer group high was at 80 percent, and the low was at 57.8 percent. Another indicator of completions is really what student success is about, is helping students complete their goal, is being able to persist in the program of study. And so this is a year persistence rate, so if they've completed six units in one fall term, do they come back in the, in the next term, and the, the percentage of students that can, that do that. And so we're, IVC is at 77.2 percent, the high of the peer group was at 80 percent. The statewide average is at 66 percent, just for comparison purposes. So we're right up there, near the top of our peer group, and a lot of these peer groupings are about 20 colleges or so, between about 20 and 27 typically, just so you can get a sense of the numbers of colleges we're compared against. The annual successful course completion rate for our career technical education courses is 73.6 percent, and this is the percentage of the students that receive a successful grade, A, B, C, or credit in their CTE courses. This is right at the peer group average. It has improved by 2 percent from, from two years ago, so we are seeing an upward trend on this, even though we're just at our peer group average. The statewide average for the CTE number is 76 percent, so it's a slight, this is the one indicator where we're slightly below the statewide average. On the next indicator, this is our annual successful course completion rate for our basic skills courses. Here, we're again near the top at 70 percent. This is like the, the CTE course completion rate, this is the percentage of students that have a successful outcome in a course. The peer group average was at 63 percent, the statewide average is 61 percent for comparison And now we're on the improvement rate. This is, the state went through a recoding process on, on how to code courses that are below college level. So everybody across the state went through kind of realigning courses to below college level, and so we're all comparing apples to apples, was a big project, and we're just seeing kind of the shakeout of that, so we can really say, okay, this is two, two levels below, one level below college. And so this is showing what the improvement level is, is starting, a cohort starting at the two levels below, you know, within three years have they moved up to the next level? And so for the basic skills courses, not including, no, including the English as Second Language courses, I believe, no, this doesn't include that, that's on the next indicator, excuse me, shows 60, about 63 percent. The high of the peer group average is at 67 percent, the low is at 42 and a half percent. Statewide average for '09, '10 of that data is 59.1 percent of an improvement rate. And then the last slide that I'm going to go over is the improvement rate for our English as Second Language courses, our ESL courses, and I truncated this to just two years, because we went through the process of that recoding the year before, and so we didn't quite have that data point just yet. And I, I do think we're going to see some more shaking out as that kind of finishes, everybody finishes getting realigned. Our improvement rate is at 42.8 percent, which is right at the average, which was 43 percent for our peer group, but it has increased by 5 percent. One of the factors that, which is interesting about this, that impacts ESL, is the number of students that are over 30 taking your courses. And so at Irvine Valley College, we have a pretty robust program, and we have a lot of English Second Language learners, and a lot of students are older students that come for that remedial work, and they don't necessarily show improvement, because they're there improving within the certain level, it's not on a college track. And so I think that would explain some of the, the reasons why we're lower compared to a higher average. We are embarking on a project to be able to separate those two populations out, to be able to look at our college transfer students that need the remedial or the, the language support before moving up to the level of college-level English, and the other population that is getting those services to, for lifelong learning-type purposes. So that will conclude Irvine Valley College's report. I'd like to invite Dr. Nicole Ortega from Saddleback College to give-
I'm sorry, before you do that, could we ask if there are any questions-
Oh, sure, sure.
-from board members about your part of this?
Okay.
Trustee Melcheck.
Yeah, I thought that was an excellent report, and you, Irvine Valley College does an excellent job. One of the, one of the people that, that- One of the people that spoke at the Student Success Workshop at Saddleback College was Carol Bander, who teaches English as a Second Language at Saddleback College. She mentioned how many of the students that take English as a Second Language are like doctors and lawyers and engineers from other countries that come here that don't really speak English. So they learn the skills, and they can get high-paying jobs here, and they help our community a lot. And this is one of the programs they're thinking about cutting statewide. So I just want to point out the importance of this program, and I don't know how you measure the success of these students, because obviously, they contribute greatly to our society when they learn English, because then they can use their skills here. But I think it's a good thing to do, so thank you.
Sure.
Okay. And any other trustees? I'll just make a comment. I really appreciated your report. It's great, and it's good to see our colleges are doing really pretty well, or IVC is. It's very hard to see the blue figures on the black background, and that's what you really want to highlight, and it's particularly hard in your slides, more so than the handout. So if you could make some adjustment to that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do, that's an easy request.
Great. All right. Seeing no other comments, we'll go let our president from Saddleback introduce the person from Saddleback.
Well, actually, we have a couple people, Madam President and trustees. I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Nicole Ortega, our lead researcher, and also Shuka Tarabi, who also worked there. Raise your hand, Shuka, are you coming up? And then, of course, they all work with our Director of Planning Research and grants, Gretchen Brender.
Okay, wonderful. We get all three of them up, or no?
(laughing)
Okay.
Good evening, President Padberg, trustees, and Chancellor Portner. I am Nicole Ortega, the research analyst from Saddleback College, and I'm here to present the 2011 ARC report. My presentation will include the same performance indicators, definitions, and timeframes as presented by Chris. To begin, I will discuss briefly an overview of the performance indicators. Saddleback performed at or above their peer group average in five out of the seven performance indicators. Furthermore, Saddleback performed above the statewide average in all seven performance indicators. And Saddleback College also has had consistent performance indicators for the past three reporting years. This first chart shows the college's performance in student progress and achievement. Just as a quick reminder, this rate includes transfers, degrees, and certificates. This rate has remained somewhat consistent from 60.8 percent in the '07-'08 academic year to 62.9 percent in the '09-'10 academic year. And over these same three academic years, Saddleback has performed well above the peer group average in student progress and achievement. Moving on, the percentage of students who have earned more than 30 units has steadily increased from 76.6 percent in '07-'08 to 79.3 percent in '09-'10. Saddleback's percentage is closely approaching the peer group high, and over these same three academic years, Saddleback has performed well above the peer group average in the number, in the percentage of students who have earned more than 30 units. Continuing ahead, the persistence rates for Saddleback College have increased from 74.5 percent in the '07-'08 academic year to 79.2 percent in the '09-'10 academic year. Saddleback's rate is nearly at the peer group high. Additionally, this indicator showed the second-highest increase out of all seven indicators, which was a 5 percent increase. Over these same three academic years, Saddleback has performed well above the peer group average in persistence rates. Additionally, within our career technical education, the annual successful course completion rate for Saddleback College was right around the peer group average in '07-'08 and '08-'09, which was around 76 percent. However, in the most recent ARC report in the '09-'10 academic year, Saddleback has started to pull away from the peer group average with a rate of 78.1 percent. Moreover, the annual successful course completion rate for basic skills courses, which, as a quick reminder, are the courses below college level and are not transferable, has steadily increased from 61.9 percent in '07-'08 to 65 percent in '09-'10. Over these same three academic years, Saddleback has performed right around the peer group Continuing on with this, this chart displays Saddleback's improvement rates for basic skills courses, which have remained relatively unchanged from 59.5 percent in '07-'08 to 60.9 percent in '09-'10. Continuing on, Saddleback's improvement rate for basic skills courses have remained relatively unchanged, hovering around 60 percent for the past three ARC reports. Although relatively unchanged, Saddleback has performed well above their peer group Over the two most recent ARC reports for the '08-'09 and '09-'10 academic year, Saddleback has dramatically increased the improvement rates for ESL courses, 34.1 percent in '08-'09 to 46.3 percent in '09-'10, and are almost on par with the peer group average. Additionally, this indicator showed the highest increase out of all of the indicators with a 12.3 increase. No data prior to '08-'09 was included because courses below college level were grouped into a single grouping, and it made it very difficult to show student progress, as Chris had previously In summation, college back, Saddleback College is mostly on par with their peer group average. The two performance indicators that showed the most improvement were the persistent rates with 5 percent increase and the ESL improvement rates with 12.3 percent increase. The remaining performance indicators, which included rates for transfer, degrees, certificate, and course completion rates for career technical and basic skills courses, remained relatively steady. And Chris and I both thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Sorry, any trustees have any questions? Trustee Melchecker.
Just another brief comment.
Push your mic, please.
I thought I did.
There you go.
There you go, okay. So I also thank you, it was an excellent report also, and I once again say that our colleges, and I hope my mother sees that both our colleges are doing excellently in helping our students succeed in their careers as students. And another thing, when this ARC report was first mandated in Sacramento, if you read it, it not only tells how we help students, but it really emphasizes the myriad ways that we offer support to students in so many ways, and how it helps all of our students succeed across the state. And really, it stresses how important the community colleges are. So I would recommend, you know, just reading the information about the ARC report, and it really gives you a really good basis of information of how community colleges are so important to our state.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from trustees? Okay, thank you. Do we have another presenter from Saddleback? Or no? Okay. All right, very good. So that concludes 4.2, and we'll now move to 4.1, which is student success planning. And I'm going to ask our two presidents to present that, I guess.
We're trying to see who's going first.
Okay.
Who is going first? I guess it's us.
Suzanne first.
Well, I'm pleased to introduce, this time I'll make sure I get the right people that are presenting, and not just in the audience. We have Penny Scaff, who is our professor and faculty coordinator. We have Dr. Don Boucher, our Vice President of Instruction, Assistant Dean and Nursing Director Tammy Rice, and then our Dean, Dr. Kevin O'Connor, Dean of Liberal Arts. Take it away, folks.
Okay. Again, my name is Penny Scaff, and I'm a counselor at Saddleback College and instructor of applied psychology, and our new matriculation coordinator. Loving it, it's been great so far. I'm the one that gets to tell students, "You're not doing so hot in math," but it's okay, because you say it with a smile. On behalf of everyone at Saddleback College, we're really excited to share with you our student success pathway to success. And each of our presenters will come up and introduce themselves a little bit more, but let's just go ahead and jump right into pathway to student success. The first, and I'm kind of speaking at first about what the message is to our students and to the parents of our potential students. And so the first thing we want to tell students is, "Come prepared," meaning, when you're in high school, take it serious. You know, even your senior year, we want to see four years of English, and we want to see four years of math. And I want to tell you something personally. I live near one of our bigger feeder high schools, and if I'm driving up Oso Parkway around 10:30 in the morning, and I see students leaving, driving out, or walking out of that campus, I roll down my window and go, "Seniors, go back to school, get back, enroll in a math." So, Dr. Burnett, if we ever get, like, there's some crazy gal from Saddleback, it's me. So we want students to come prepared, and we want our students, while they're in high schools, even middle schools, we want them to be thinking about Saddleback College and taking advantage of our incredible student outreach program, where Leslie Humphrey and her folks, where they go out, a lot of our students go out with Leslie, and they go out and they tell students, you know, about what's happening at Saddleback College, and invite them back here on campus for family night, high school senior day, our early bird application month in March. So these are the things that we're doing for our students to come prepared. I'm going to go quick, because we have lots to share. The next thing is get enrolled. And get enrolled means, complete that Saddleback College application online, and then go through matriculation, a three-step process, as soon as you can. And, you know, right away, look at the services that we have at Saddleback that can support students, such as financial aid, and see a counselor once a semester. The other hat I wear here in my counseling role is probation Penelope. And those are the students, you know, if they're not doing so hot, so, you know, academically. So we want to make sure that students get enrolled, they know what they're taking, and that they're in their basic skills courses if they need to be. Select a pathway. By, you know, we really want to push our students, by their second semester here at Saddleback, we want them to know, what's their goal? Really, concretely, what is their goal? What major do they want? What do they want to do? Is it, you know, CTE certificate? Is it a two-year degree? Is it transfer? Is it all of it? Because you can actually do all three of those things. The other thing we want to tell students, and this is the part where it gets tough, and this is where we try to educate parents and families as well, stay the course. This is where the students get into the, I'm looking at a student, where you get into the minutia of the courses you have to take, your general ed, your lower-division major prep, your electives, your basic skills classes. And, you know, students can kind of, you know, senioritis, no, just kind of, you can hit a doldrum. And this is where the student needs to see a counselor once a semester at minimum and have a current-approved academic plan. The other thing is become involved. Studies show, if you go from your car to your class and back to your car, you're not going to be that engaged with your campus. You're not going to be that successful. It's those students that get involved with the campus at Saddleback and at any university or community college, those are the ones that do well and reach their goals, particularly the quickest. And then celebrate completion. And we do a good job of that at Saddleback College. You know, this is, the best day of the year, I think, for many of us, is commencement. And so we want students, whether, you know, regardless of what their celebration is, is it because it's this semester and they just got their last class in to earn their CTE certificate? Is it because they, you know, it's May, and they just completed and walked through graduation, and the trustees all went woo like this with the music and the balloons? You know, that is a great thing, we want students to celebrate it. And if we hear students say, "Ah, I'm not going to go to the commencement ceremony as counselors and as faculty and as student leaders," we all say, "Yes, you are," because it's a great day. And then reach goals. So whatever the student's goal was here, our hope is that, you know, that they take those accomplishments here at the college, they push it forward to the four-year, they take it out to the community and become successful civilians, become successful community members in our areas and even outside of Orange County. Okay, I told you I could talk fast. You should see me in my classes. Okay. The inner, and this, so that was kind of what we tell students and families. So now what we're going to share with you is kind of what we do as a college to be prepared to share this information with our students and even their parents. And that is, one, we have an ongoing intersegmental learning council, and this is made up, it's so great, it's made up between Saddleback College faculty, high school faculty, faculty from the university level, and we get together and we're able to talk about our curriculum and talk about what does today's student look like, you know, what are their needs? And so that's an ongoing group, the intersegmental learning council. We have concurrent enrollment. I have an 11-year-old son, and he's coming to Saddleback, but in the seventh grade. He, you know, we have students who actually graduate in May from Saddleback and then in June from their high school. So there's concurrent enrollment, and those overachievers can take advantage of that, or those students who need some extra support can take advantage of that. So concurrent enrollment is something that really helps our students succeed. Early bird registration, it's not the early bird special, it's the month of March, and that's where you fill out an application, and you let, you let us, what we learned from our feeder high schools is, potentially, how many incoming freshmen from our feeder high school, how many can we kind of predict are going to be showing up at our doors come August? So early bird is really key, because we get those students in, we get a profile of who they are, we get them through the matriculation process. So early bird is very important to the success of our students. And then there's career technical education, something that's really important to high school students, is that we have a number of courses that are articulated. So we have students who in high school can take, can take their ROP or their CTE course, that course is aligned, it kind of is equal to a class here, and they get college credit. So that, again, is, the CTE is a significant thing for our students to know about and participate in. And then there's the Applied Psychology 1 and 140 classes that are taught by our terrific counselors, and they go in, and really, it's almost like an ongoing counseling session for eight weeks or 16 weeks. But it's where students, and if I could wave a wand, it would be that it was, you know, mandatory, because I'll have students using me, my class, for Area E Life Skills, CSU transfer, and they'll say, "Scaff, why didn't you make me take this my first semester?" And I'll say, "I wish you did." But the state, when we look further at the student's success, we'll see that that's something they're considering. And then get enrolled. Matriculation. Matriculation is a three-part process. It's orientation, and at Saddleback, we do it online and face-to-face. This summer, we'll be holding our first level ever. We've kind of done it in different names and different contexts, but we're calling it the freshman advantage. We've got this from a basic skills initiative grant, a BSI grant, we were able to secure that, and what we're going to do is, we're going to get those students that are at high risk, these incoming freshmen, and mid-July, put them through a one-day, kind of one-stop, get them studentized, get them into their classes, get them into the basic skills courses that they need, so that we're giving them no excuse to not be successful at Saddleback. So matriculation is three parts, and we test for math, English, and reading. And the three parts, again, are the online orientation or face-to-face, the assessment where you actually have to, and we're telling students, "Take that assessment test, that placement test, think of it just like the SAT. It has that kind of impact." And Dr. O'Connor's going to share with you in a minute the impact it has when students don't take that placement serious. Did you take that placement serious? Right on. Okay, all right. So in-person and online orientation, in-person and online advising. So for those students that they're, you know, doing everything in their phones, then we've got it for them. For that student that needs to see a counselor and talk face-to-face, we're there for them as well. So, you know, it's not a one, it's a dual approach to meet the needs of the students that come to our door. And then counseling service, cannot stress this enough, you know, we can do survey after survey. Students that do well here, it's because they're in the counseling department, meeting with their counselor, and when I say "their counselor," it means, yes, they're going back, they've established rapport, relationship, and they're coming back to see Sharon Newsenbaum or Steve Honda and seeing our counselors and all the others, because they're all fabulous, coming, even me, coming to see us, and, you know, each semester, and talking about their educational plan. And then the basic skills courses. Kevin, again, is going to share some information about that, but it is clear, and this is where that intersegmental group is so key, because we have students who are doing fine in high school, but they come to Saddleback and do the placement, and they're not doing so well. They play slower than they anticipated. So we've got to correct that problem. And if that means getting them in here earlier during their senior year to help them get through basic skills courses, you know, we have to find a solution at Saddleback, and the state is looking for solutions for that, too, through the task force. And that's it, from me, for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Excuse me, I'm Kevin O'Connor, Dean of Liberal Arts. What students take at a college, that's very important, it's very consequential. Why they take courses is equally influential to successful outcomes and pathways, and when they take a set of courses. The steps to student success, even though the first slide indicated it might be a sequential, it's so important for students to have the big picture as soon as possible. My colleague Penny said- My colleague Penny said, well, maybe students need to know by their second semester, what is their pathway? What we're really hoping at Saddleback College is we're going to see increasing number of students arriving on our campus already very clear about why they're here, what they want to do. The slide you have in front of you, the basic skills track, one of the things the ARC data that was presented from both of the colleges made clear to us is we have a lot of challenges. The students have a lot of challenges, in particular those who are arriving on our campuses and they're not prepared in English, reading, and math. And so if you take a look at transferable English, some of our students, before they can take a transferable English class, are enrolled in our ESL classes, which are great. But if you move up, once a student maybe spends a semester or two, or perhaps longer in ESL courses, then moves into two levels below college writing, English 300, or and/or our reading class, English 340. After a successful completion of one or both of those courses, moving toward transferable English, which is important to all pathways, CTE, transfer, and the AA and AS degrees, the student would then next move in a subsequent, hopefully the next semester, into English 200. It's only after that sequence has been completed, for that student who arrived on our campus, not ready for college-level reading, college-level writing, that the student would be ready to start college English. And the other panel on transferable math indicates the same. So you certainly see why our ARC data outcome, we, it must be better, it needs to be better, we can make it better. And that's why it's so important with outreach, come prepared. And we're working diligently and have been in the last couple of years to enhance our outreach with the K through 12s, as well as outreach to the, our four-year institutions in the county and in the area. Because this is very daunting for students who aren't college-ready. The likelihood that they're going to even make, well, a CTE program or the AA or AS degree is significantly statistically reduced if they start several levels below in English or in math or in reading. Select a pathway. You know, it's really important to have purpose in everything we do in life. And that's why I think it would be great, certainly no later than the second semester at Saddleback, but certainly our goal should be that more and more students, when they come onto our campuses the first day, through our partnerships with our K through 12s and our high schools, students have a very clear idea of what they want to do, the direction, the pathway they want to take. That doesn't mean it won't change. It can for some, it will for many. But starting with a purpose. The basic skills courses are important to every pathway. Any one of these three pathways, that list of basic skills courses is essential, and the transfer level courses for success in any of these three pathways. And I always believe, I think it just makes good sense, common sense, if you know where you're going, if you know why you're taking courses, because you have a pathway goal, it helps tremendously to stay with what it is you're doing. And that's staying the course. The next slide. One of the disappointing statistics in all of the community colleges is even when we identify students through a matriculation process who do need developmental or basic skills work, too many students defer taking those classes. So what's so important is they take those classes in their first semester. There's a possibility through changes in legislation that the community colleges might soon eventually be able to require students to take developmental courses in their first semester. We are not able currently to make that requirement. Also, getting more students, and this is come prepared, using our summer sessions to take the courses they need in basic skills. If they're one level below, they can take care of that in the summer and start at college-level math or college-level writing in their first fall semester on our campus. Of course, there's no denying that when you do something, when you take a course, or when you link to a campus, and the support systems on a campus is crucial to a student's success and successful completion of a selected outcome. We just listed here several of the various ways students need to connect to our campus. Many of our students do link to counseling, tutorials, financial aid, special services, and EOPS. We are driving more and more students to those areas. That they attend college transfer fairs, career services, and will keep them on the course, staying the course, and reaching their goals.
So again, one of the ways that we can keep the students motivated and engaged with the campus is becoming involved. And at Saddleback College, there is no short supply of clubs and activities that they can belong to, beginning with our honors, beginning with our honors programs such as student council, or sorry, associated student government, our athletic programs, clubs. I always tell students, if you don't see one of the 40-plus clubs you want to belong to, find four other students and start one. And that looks great on the high school trans, or on the transcript when they're transferring or to discuss in their personal statement to the UC or private institution. And so also to, again, not to be that student that just drives in, parks, goes to class and leaves, but to really establish a relationship with their instructor. I encourage students, if your instructor doesn't know your name, you have a problem. Because we don't have large lecture like UCLA or USC with, you know, 500, 300 students in a course. So, you know, it's important that the students know you, know you, and know you even outside of the class, in extracurricular activities, in lab activities, but to get involved in that way. And then to get involved in the community, to be a part of community or cooperative work experience. It's important that students, and they can get it through our Center for Career Life and Development, that they get a good resume, that they get an internship. Just talking with a parent and a student the other night at family night, and she has a Saddleback College student who's a graduate, very successful now, and now the other sibling is coming here in the fall. But it was the internship, that internship that they took advantage of while they were at Saddleback, that really is kind of, you know, put them on this trajectory of success, along with our great faculty and our wonderful classes. And then again, celebrate completion. If it's, you know, occupational skills award or the CTEs, we have almost 100 CTEs, career technical education certificates. And that's great. And a lot of the people that we see coming for those are those folks who unfortunately maybe have been, you know, displaced out of their jobs, and they're coming here and we can, and they already have their four-year degree perhaps, and we can encourage them to get involved and start taking one of our CTE courses. Or they don't, they come here thinking all they will do is get the CTE certificate, and they end up with a two-year degree and ready to transfer as well. So to really celebrate those, and to, our transfer center does a phenomenal job of bringing colleges and universities onto our campus almost weekly. So students can, you know, see and talk with someone who can help them, you know, where they want to go the next semester or two years from now. So transfer. So we celebrate this. I mean, graduation commencement, that is a big day here when we put on the hat. That's a great day. But every day is a great day at Saddleback, because our students, any week, anytime during a semester, can be accomplishing one of these, you know, one of their own personal goals. That's doing well in a class, following through on an appointment with a counselor, earning that CTE certificate, and filing by November 1, which they all should have done, you know, or, or being this close to a transfer. Okay, and I think, and then, oh, the last thing I want to share with you, and I too, and I'm, and I'm, can't talk now, an alum of Saddleback College and wear that, you know, big t-shirts, and tell the world. And as many of our faculty and staff are, it's, it's hard to leave Saddleback College. It's such a great place to be. But with Dr. Burnett's leadership, you know, we have over something like 500,000 lists of past alums, and that we are currently, you know, working towards a very significant, another significant cardinal and gold alumni program in the area. Thank you. Reach goals. Okay, you can read, but something that's really important, and that is that if you look at the statistics, it's pretty amazing. 70% of California nurses and 80% of our, you know, our community, law enforcement and EMTs, they come from a community college. And when you heard from, from our counselor tonight, her son is going into an EMT program. So, you know, that's where, if you look at law enforcement and civil servants, so many of them, where they got that, that knowledge and that experience is from their community college. And, you know, we're just about as close as you can be to number one in nursing. And then when you look at those students that graduate from the UC and the CSU, that you can see right there, a large percentage of them begin their college education at a community college. And just one last fact that's not there. If you take, if you look at a GPA of a Saddleback, or I'm sorry, a GPA of a community college student at their junior year, it's greater than the junior transcript of a student who started at the four-year. I hope that was clear. But you've got, you're going to end up as a junior standing when you start at a community college, your GPA is going to be a bit higher than if you went straight to that four-year and maybe, you know, got a little sidetracked. Okay.
Although we're very successful as a college, our students are very successful, we want to be better, we want more of our students to have even greater successful outcomes. As indicated in this slide, certainly kudos to CTE, which was also mentioned in the ARC data, the incredible improvement in CTE completion. You see, if you look at the three lines in the graph, the, the area that we have grown the most in, in achieving the goal of a CTE, and we've done well with the AA and AS degrees. Transfers have taken a little bit of a dip, we're not quite certain why that is. Perhaps the economy, every day we read how it is more and more difficult for students and families to pursue the four-year education dream. Perhaps that's the reason. We all know that we want to do better, and in the past year, the state chancellor's office and the board of governors were required through Senate Bill 1143 by Carol Lou to create the Student Success Task Force, a team of 20 people, spent almost the entire past year helping us, I think, figure out ways to rethink what we do in the California community college system and how we can help students to achieve even better outcomes. This slide indicates the eight key recommendations in the report. Several people tonight have already mentioned that Saddleback College had the great honor to have three folks from this team come last week in this room and talk about the 73-page report. Most importantly, listened to a lot of great feedback from audience members, and I understand from emails that they are working online, the committee, in preparation of some additional revisions to the document at their December 7 meeting, all good news. Of the eight recommendations, the one I just want to briefly focus on is the first, increase college and career readiness. Prepare, prepare, prepare. We can increase that before students arrive through our outreach and the intersegmentals, which Penny mentioned. Saddleback is very pleased that last year, we gave opportunities for faculty in our English and our math departments to come together and meet with their colleagues, their discipline-specific colleagues in the high schools and the universities. And every month, we are having meetings, they have a project, and it is about preparation, getting people ready so when they come on any campus, including ours, they can move through more quickly and more successfully and reach their goals. So we're very, very proud of that. And I think the Student Success Task Force draft recommendations have also served at Saddleback College as an opportunity to validate the fact that if you go through any of these eight recommendations, even the details in the full 73-page report, you see, for many years, the colleges in this district have been moving through these pathways, utilizing many of the recommendations and strategies, either explicitly mentioned in the report or implied.
Good evening. I'm Don Boucher, the Acting Vice President for Instruction at Saddleback College. And it's my duty here on the, within this presentation, to talk a little bit about some of the things that we need to do, some of the things that other districts and collegers are doing. And, that should not have done that. Let me just use the next one. The, there's a national movement. If you recall, we presented some time ago, the 2020 Vision Report, where the community colleges are charged with increasing student success or completion by 1 million by the year 2020. So all, Saddleback and California community colleges are not the only institutions looking at this. There is much reform going on. For example, some of the states require a common mandatory assessment, we talked about that. Also about declaring a major early in your program, the time that it takes a student to get through the basic skills, greater use of course prerequisites in getting students through the required courses. And then requiring academic progress for the board of governors' fee waivers, and also more structure and consistency in a degree and certificate requirements. And more flexibility in the spending categories, for example, the 50% law, and maybe perhaps changing that. Now, what are the next steps? We talked about what we're doing at Saddleback, what we advise our students to do, but what are some of the things that we might do as a college? First, we need to agree upon a college-wide definition of student success. We talk about the student success, but we each may have a different definition. We want the common definition so we can work toward that common goal. Also, make student success a priority here at Saddleback College. Establish a student success matrix, and I'll talk about that in just the next slide. And set goals for improvement. You saw our ARC report data, we have goals there that we would like to, to meet or exceed. And we want to be sure that everyone on our campus, whether it be faculty, staff, or management, understand the policies and get involved. Policies from the state, policies from our board of trustees, our district policies and procedures, and so on. And also, here at Saddleback, we want to support those who are willing to innovate and work towards improving our student success. And we want to incentivize students to follow their pathways and to succeed. I mentioned student success matrix. We are looking at templates, either we talk about milestones or enrollment patterns. For example, on the milestones, we're talking about looking, as the ARC report did, where students are at certain points in their college career and their attainment of those. Or when we look at enrollment patterns, again, attending, you know, full-time in the first term and the various matrix we're looking here. We as a college need to decide what it is we're going to measure and how we're going to measure those. Some of the approaches we can use require orientation, student success courses, require student development, or student develop an academic plan of pathways. We need to optimize our scheduling and be sure that we can allow students to enroll full-time and have a better sequencing of their courses. And, and require students to take math, English as a default schedule, adopt diagnostic assessment and modular skills, use an early alert system in the high attrition courses. And again, we need to validate our, continue to validate our CTE certificates and encourage in their award. And we want to implement new technology applications so that we can better guide students. We have a few here listed that we are currently working on as a district, and requires students to declare a program of studies early in their career. And now I'd like to turn the microphone over to Tammy Rice to talk about a couple of projects that we have that demonstrate our success.
Hi, I'm Tammy Rice. I'm Assistant Dean for Health Sciences and Human Services and the Nursing Program Director. And I'd like to talk to you about some of the things that we have been doing at Saddleback College that have been innovative and we've had some very good results with. In 2005, the nursing program was awarded a student success grant, and at that time, we start, we built a model and we started our nursing student success project. And this is a model of how we did this. And our original purpose was to increase retention or reduce attrition. At the time, the attrition in nursing programs in the state of California were somewhere between 25 and 50%. So that was a big push from the legislators, we had to reduce attrition. Increase graduation rates, increase the passing rate on our national licensure exam, and identify problem areas or places where we could make necessary changes to improve the overall nursing education here at Saddleback College. So we came up with this model, and we admit 60 students a semester, and when we admit those students, we test them. We pre-tested them to see for test of essential academic skills. If they did not pass the test at a 67%, they were placed If they did not pass the test at a 67%, they were placed in remediation. That remediation was produced between math, science, and engineering, reading, English, counselors, and with nursing faculty. And through that, we made a remediation protocol that is still in effect here at Saddleback College. We made a protocol for reading, for math, and for both. And so the student goes over to counseling now, they fill out what the student will be taking for that year of remediation. The student remediates, and then they come back to the nursing department and they retake the test. If they pass the test at that point, then they are admitted to the program. So that was the one thing that the state let us do because that was, we weren't getting the caliber in the reading and math that we needed for the nursing program. The second thing that we did is we hold a huge nursing orientation. I truly believe that orientations are the most important, are the most important thing for new students. And I don't care, they hold them in math, science, and engineering also, because we go over there and talk to their students about being in a nursing program, because they take many of the same courses that we do. So I think that that's one, is a very important thing. And during that time, we test them for critical thinking, we have them do self-assessment, and we had a risk assessment for our students. See, initially, we were looking at those people who were at risk and what could we do for them. By the end of our program, and still now, we look for what makes them successful now. We know what is at risk, but what, who are the people that are going to be successful? So we sort of turned it around that way. And so we did a risk assessment, and we would initiate a plan. We had four faculty advisors, and every student was assigned a faculty advisor during that time. And then we had one case manager, and that was Linda Gleason, and she's here with us tonight. And together, they would either come up with an uncomplicated academic plan, or we made a individual outcome plan for the students. Now, what we found was, we didn't have a lot of money. We did have a grant, but we didn't have a lot of money to pay for outside resources. And we found that this campus has every resource that we need to have a student success plan. Bar none, there's all the, all these people have been hiding under the, you know, all the rocks all this time. And so Linda went and she met each, each area individually, and she developed plans for people who were in nursing. We tried stress groups with the health center, and we had those at noon on Wednesday. We did a lot of activities with the students and their families. We had a family night. We had a spooky skills lab that everybody came to, and we had Halloween party. We had lots of workshops on math, reading, how to study. We had workshops on mapping. We do what we call concept mapping on our patients, for our clinical patients. And so at one point, we even had a mapping contest so that people could compete against one another to do that. We were trying to make it so that they were learning, but they were also learning in a group, and they felt a lot of support for that. Everything that we did changed every semester because every group was different. And so basically, what happened was, we had English 333, we used that a lot. They actually took, Cheryl Altman took our nursing textbooks, and she designed the course around those textbooks to teach our students how to study and learn. And that was very successful, and many people succeeded from that. We also developed a new course called Nursing 202, and it is an actual student success course. Of course, it's based off the Health Workforce Initiative Student Success Kit, and that's available to all of us here. It's free. And it has all kinds of activities for student success. And so we built the course from that, and we don't require it, but I tell them it is an expectation that they will attend, and they, almost 99% of them attend, and it has helped immensely in showing them how to use their textbook, how do you read a syllabus, how do you use that syllabus, and what is an objective, and how do you learn what to do with that objective? And that's all before they even start the courses. We show them how to organize their syllabi and get everything ready before they actually come into class so that they can start right from the beginning without being all the way confused and so lost that they don't know where to go. Now, not does every student need that, no, but I think a lot of our community college students do. And I think it doesn't help, it's not expensive, and it doesn't, doesn't take that much time to do that with them. Another thing that we did is we started a Nursing 204 course, this beginning nursing concepts. And it's all about how, what does a nurse do, what is the real life of a nurse? And so that way, we have reduced the number of people that have straight A's, come in the program, and then walk away in the first two weeks. Because they know exactly what they're getting into, they know they have to touch people, talk to people, and we smell. That's how it is. So they, they sort of know those things. We encourage them to volunteer and do things like that. And so, what have been our outcomes? Well, we now have a 14% attrition rate, and that is very good for us. We also have completion rates, those are people that maybe have to step out, come back, and then they come back in, of 89 to 90%, which is also very good for, as a state average. Our NCLEX pass rate, which our national exam, has been very high. It's been anywhere from 94 to 99.07%. I have to tell you, when I first came to Saddleback College, I looked and I saw that it was 75% one quarter, and I thought, oh my, what's happened here? And from then on, we all just regrouped, and we've been working very hard as a faculty and staff, and we've done a great job with the students here and with the program. We also have the joy of having 90% of our students hired last year, within the first six months of graduating. And that's pretty good. It was 99% before last year, but in this economy, we're feeling pretty happy about that. And lastly, we did have a major curricular, curricular change right in the center of all this, which was brought about by this grant. And we're very happy with the changes that we've made and what has happened. We did hire a consultant firm, and they did surveys for us at the end of the first year and the second year to tell us how we were doing, were we being supportive, did the students feel support? Social support is very important, whether you give it to them or not, they only have to perceive it. And so if they think you're there and they think you're helping them, then they will do well, because they will exceed whatever expectations that you give them. We had a group that would do phone calls when they withdrew from the program to ask them why they withdrew, are they returning, what were some of the barriers to their learning. And we learned a lot about ourselves in the last seven years, and we have a lot of data, and we're hoping that we can put a lot of that data to work and help us in the next 10 years also. Now, another program that does very, very well is the athletic program. Now, the athletic program, if you are aware of this or not, they are required, the students are required to have an academic plan. And in this plan, they have to go weekly to their instructors and get their grades, and then take those grades to their coach. They also have what they call their success rate, and they define their success rate as progress toward their educational goal and be in good academic standing. So that's how they measure their success rate. But their other success is, is that they will stay on plan, and their number one goal is transfer. And that is their little carrot for them to keep them going. So the coaches and their instructors there set the bar very high, and these people attain it because they know that there's something, there's an incentive at the end for them to reach it. So there's many, many ways to do student success. We already do a lot of the, we already are aligned with a lot of the recommendations from the committee, and I felt really good when I read the report, and hopefully that we can do more and more here, and especially with the BSI project. So thank you for having us here tonight, and do you have any questions?
Let me see, student advisory. Do we have someone who wants to comment? Student trustee, though. You want to pass? Trustee Lang.
Yes, first, I just want to congratulate all of you on a terrific report. That was very good information. Penny, all of us are impressed with your excitement and enthusiasm. And Tamara, I thought some of the innovative things that are being done in both the nursing and athletic programs are great. One thing puzzled me a little bit, and that was on the graph regarding Saddleback student achievement, everything showed upward trends, except for the line for transfers between two years ago and this past year, I guess. And I'm wondering, any speculation as to what that was attributable to? Anybody that would like to comment about that?
I have a similar question.
Asha, could you wait till we have a response?
No, I don't have a prepared answer for that. I certainly will get the information for you. It was slightly less, but we still have a high transfer rate.
President Burnett would like to talk.
Thank you, thank you. Trustee, I asked that same question, and our transfer director, Miki McCollacheck, our coordinator, actually told us that what's the biggest factor is actually the reductions in amount of CSU and UC applicants and acceptances. The cost side, at the same point, the cost side for the private institutions, even though it's been pretty flat, it hasn't increased the level to make up for the decreases, frankly, in the CSU and UCs, that's why.
And Dan Walsh from the Academic Senate wanted to...
Did Con cover that?
Oh, he covered that, okay. Trustee Mel Chikor?
Yeah, I was going to ask the question, similar to what the president, what Dan Walsh commented on. A number of years ago, I was on a commission for leg and finance, legislation and finance for the state. And we worked with this, we worked very hard to actually require the University of California system to have a system where they had 60-40. 60% of their students were upper division, and 40% of their students were lower division. And that's because we promised our students that when they transferred, they would have a place to transfer into. And we insisted that the CSUs or the UCs would take our students when they transferred and made sure that they had kept that ratio going. I'm just wondering if we're losing ground on that now? I hope not, because we have kind of a promise to our students that when they graduate from our college, there'll be a place for them at one of the CSUs or the UCs. And I hope the doors are not closing on our students, because we're doing a fabulous job. I know the easiest way to get into a UC or CSU is to go to community college for two years, because we have room for you here, and we have classes for you here, and you can't get into the UCs or CSUs and transfer to a UC or CSU. And of course, you could say you're a graduate of the CSU, and you'll still be proud that you're a graduate of Saddleback College, which I'm a graduate of Saddleback College also. And yet, it's a really good deal financially and educationally for the student. But are these doors closing at the higher, at the four-year institutions?
It's not that it's actually closing. Where we run into a problem is that when majors are impacted. So when there's an impaction on a major, and if you look at a syst or you look at any college/university website, they will show you which majors are impacted. And almost all majors are impacted these days. So it is a problem. And so what our students have to do is they have to earn a higher GPA. 10 years ago, and it's still in black and white, but the reality is, you know, 10 years ago, a 2.0, a 2.5 would get you there. No longer will that happen. If the major's impacted, even if it's at a local university, it's, what becomes competitive is that major. So even though there might be that UC or that CSU that's neighboring school for us, a school where our students really are almost guaranteed to go. But I do want to say, in a positive vein, that because of the tag agreements that we have and the way that we work with our students, that the more and more tag agreements we get, the more students we get involved in that process, the more guarantees we can offer our students.
What's the tag program?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a transfer agreement program.
I do know about our transfer agreements. And from my understanding, the transfer agreements guarantee transfer for our students. So I hope those are still in place.
They absolutely are, and our counselors are very aware of them, and our students, every day, more and more, know about them and know when they need to complete that paperwork. But it's tough.
Steph, I wonder if you could just mention the scholar-baller program? We talked about the need to keep our athletics GPAs up, but that is a great program that the scholar-baller is the athletes that are, is it 4.0 or higher?
I believe it's a 3.5, yeah.
3.5?
3.0.
3.0 and higher, scholar-baller, be a scholar-baller.
Yes, and five-thirty cap, maybe is there.
Right, yeah, and they are recognized. And our student trustee, Larson, has a question.
All right. First of all, I was a scholar-baller when I played water polo, just as a side note. But I think to answer trustee Lang's question of why, in the past year or so, there has been a decrease in student success. It is quite obvious. We are at a time where we don't have a library. We have a lower, lowering of quality for a studying environment, if you will. We're in a diminished space. There's not enough room and resources for students to study. It's, I do agree that you are teaching students how to study, but, but there is limited space to study. So I think that is one factor we all can consider, and I'd imagine that when we do have the library, I'd expect to see the numbers rise.
And our president is going to comment about the library and where we are with the remodeling, reopening of the library.
Well, not only that, leave it to our student trustee to bring up something that was hidden behind these numbers that you figured out. And one of them is, if you notice, the timeframe for the ARC report is actually two years behind. And if you notice, the transfer data is actually up to date. That was last year, correct? Am I right on that? Yeah. So there actually is some truth to what he says, and then I'm curious to see what our ARC report reports are going to be. I have a feeling they may be down a little bit, because the numbers we've seen thus far have been a tremendous decrease in tutorials, labs have been able to do because of not having that library facility up and running. So I think there's some very truth to what you just said, not only intuitively, but we've actually seen in the numbers. In fact, we, Vice President Instruction and I were just looking a while ago, months ago, and the falloff of last year with the library and labs was just incredible, so...
And what's the target date for reopening?
The target date for reopening will be, fully would be next fall, but we will start moving in at sometime in the spring, whenever we can get this finished, and then certainly over the summer. So obviously, it's long overdue, and as you can see from a student, we're hearing it all over, we very much need to get that done.
Excellent.
So thank you, student trustee.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other, did you want to comment some more?
I just wanted to comment on the student trustee's concern, and it is a concern that we all have at the college. We are currently looking for common study area for the final exam period, because we realize that this is an issue at the present time, but it'll become a much greater issue during the study period for final exams. So we do have a plan to address that.
All right, thank you very much, and it's a great report. Before we go to the IVC report, we're going to need to take a break. I'm sorry, but our two discussion items have gone long, so we'll take about a 10-minute break and come right back. Thank you.
Everyone wants me to. A lot of it would depend on my daughter. Very hard for me to not be involved in that. And if I wanted to be involved in that, I can't. Just too much time. But at the same time, I couldn't go back to being the head coach of the girls and still do this job.
Yeah. City of Tustin, Tustin School Board, do not get along. They're putting lawsuits going on right now, restructuring facilities and things like that. They're to do what they can to disrupt the whole corporation as much as possible. Trying to work with them to ensure whoever they put forth is somebody we can support well, and we can support them because they're faculty and not because we didn't like them in the city. Both gets something out of it, so I don't know if successful or not in that situation, but you know enough of them well enough that I hope that they, yeah, they just do.
Y'all, what is up?
No.
Only if you played fair, it would be fine.
Yeah.
As long as there is equality, then that would be fine.
Oh my God.
All that stuff, the veterans have those senior ones? Never even discussed in any of the plan. The Settleback College, I mean. I said this especially, I knew it. Again, just because they're doing badly. Then they say, we don't want it or we don't need it, you know? It's, again, go back to fairness. Let's go back to what we're doing. It's in fact, how can we practice at here at Settleback College to give people a future if we don't practice it ourselves? That's where it comes in.
Even though it's not part of my division anymore.
Well, it is, yes.
The meeting?
I wish to do it.
That we pull it, they pull it.
What you playing, coffee?
Possession.
We don't even know what it's about. No one even.
It didn't go through the process?
Class of all the council? It's the president.
I saw it. There are no new positions. The deadline, the process, right? They created the process and they said, oh, it's delayed for this year. Scratch and Earl, one of the fact members, positions were approved. Their positions. They did it on a day that people didn't even show up to vote, and Russ never showed up. I may have these three so tall, hold the whole thing, same thing. But the senior veterans, unless that's just a replacement. There are no new positions. Students are not going to be served.
Have it written down.
That's what, there are other people that want.
That's right. That's right.
You just want to take a person that's in one position in the federal's office.
Then when it's not too easy, they're doing lateral, lateral, so they steal somebody else. That's right.
We'll say, oh. That's wonderful. After they do that, it was like, but what about the other people's position?
In the, if one person left, you try to put in four more things that this person does, so it'd have to go out for reevaluation. Well, the job announcement's not going, the temporary's going to be leaving in December, we're going to be closing down finals week, we're the only lab here that allows people to print their papers. Before not opening the evening for finals week. It happened last semester. No, their actions do not support supporting students.
Fire reminds one to know. Where'd you get that call?
Look, I went to the spending for that.
Back in the boardroom?
Through that door?
Through that door, up the ramp, to the left, then make a right. There's coffee, but just go.
At nine? Because it's an hour to nine. Girl, she just has to call her.
Always have plenty of money. And whenever they would do this, I'd go, hey, you're a bar.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
All right, let's get back to order, please. Absolutely.
They said they'll keep it to 20 a day.
That's fine.
Yeah, but it's still going to go over to nine o'clock, so I'm going to make the motion now.
Yeah, go ahead. All right, we're back in session and we will get started with the final report from Irvine Valley College on student success, our discussion items, so.
Before we start that, I just, I'm being...
Cautious.
Cautious and, and I guess pessimistic that we're not going to make the nine o'clock deadline. And so I guess I will make the motion now to suspend the rules to allow going to 9:30 for the end.
All right, do our second?
Mike.
Second by trustee Meldell. Let's all vote, please. Oh, yes. All right, let's see. There's me, trustee Fuentes. Are you going to vote on extending the meeting? All right, and it's unanimous with one trustee absent, one student advisory, yes. Great, okay. Go forward, Irvine Valley College with your student success report.
Thank you, President Padberg and members of the board and Chancellor Portner. I'm Craig Justice, Vice President for Instruction at Irvine Valley College. And I and my colleagues are here tonight. They'll introduce themselves in the interest of time. And we're here to give you a report, a summary report on the student success initiatives that we've had historically at Irvine Valley College, what we're working on now and what we're going to be working on in the coming years. Student success, one concept related to it comes to us from the Community College League of California's 2020 Vision Report.
Do you have a, I'm sorry, do you have a slide presentation for us?
I do, and I'm clicking the vote, there we go, the vote.
Okay, there we go.
Overwrote it, okay, there we go. The Community College League of California 2020 Vision Report reminds us that programs and support services should be designed, and that's our job as faculty and administrators and staff. Programs should be designed to maximize the ability of students to be successful in meeting their higher education goals, that is certificate and degree completion. We should not be requiring more than what is needed, and we should be including what is needed. And that's a very good program design, and we think we do that very well. The focus on success has a long history at Irvine Valley College. In summary, one of the success centers that has been in existence for many years, formerly known as the Humanities Center, is the Irvine Valley College Writing Center. Our honors program has a long history of supporting transfer agreements with UCLA and other universities. And we have the third highest transfer rate in the Orange County. The Student Success Task Force Recommendations Final Report will come out in March 12. We're already working on some of the likely initiatives there, and of course, the Vision for Student Success 2020 Vision Report that I've already mentioned. In addition to that, the entire strategic planning structure at Irvine Valley College is being recast, so to speak, to ensure that we meet the goals of student success. I'll hand it over now to Academic Senate President Dr. Lisa Davis Allen.
Thank you and good evening. I'm simply here to introduce you to four developing goals that focused on student success. We are in the process of developing four major goals that will help us to address it based on the literature from the 2020 Vision Report, as well as the state recommendations from the Student Success Task Force. So the first goal that we're working with is addressing teaching and learning, to facilitate student success by developing programs which prepare students for academic transfer for degrees both AA and AS and career technical certificate completion. And for IVC, much of our work and our projected work in CTE and certificate programs will be further detailed for you in the next presentation on ATAP and what we hope to have planned and make real at that location. The second goal addresses intensive student support as defined by the 2020 Vision. And it, at IVC, for us, it will be to provide an exemplary instructional and student support set of services and an infrastructure that's focused on student success. The third goal that we're developing addresses leadership and accountability, which is to promote institutional effectiveness and student success based on a college culture of transparent and responsive leadership, collegial dialogue, and accountability. And we've tied this, as we're developing it, to the first major goal of the district in the new strategic plan that the district has produced. The fourth goal addresses then financial... The fourth goal addresses then finance and resource development, to enhance resources through economic, educational, as well as even environmental partnerships that ensure student success. With that, I will turn it over to our VPSS, Dr. Gwen Plano, to detail you on some of the student services that are fully developed and will continue to be enhanced.
Thank you very much, Lisa, and thank you for this opportunity to share some of the good things we're doing in student services. Frankly, all of the things we're doing in student services are good. And as a backdrop, I want you to understand that there are more than twenty programs in student services hidden in that one big building right in the center of campus. And all of them, all of them at core are focused on one thing, and that is student success. So rather than go through all twenty, and although I know you'd want to sit here for that, uh, I instead want to shift gears and just focus on four areas. So the first is one where IVC has gotten the attention, not only of the state, but national attention as well, and that is for our online orientation and online advisement. So the entire, in fact, the entire matriculation process is noteworthy. So this in particular, I draw to your attention because twenty-four seven, our students, any place, anywhere, as long as they have a computer, they can complete their orientation and their initial advisement online. Very few colleges have that as, um, an option, we do. In addition to that, even though it isn't mentioned there, our assessments themselves are all computer-based. So, what this has meant is even though with the massive cuts that have occurred up and down the state in the matriculation area, uh, and some of the colleges, when they talk about it, will actually give you horror stories because it has just had horrendous impact on the colleges, we have not felt that impact. Very solidly, I can tell you that, because of the initiatives that we took two years ago to set this up, to have the online services available and to have the computer-based testing. Now, to shift gears just a little, I want to focus on two initiatives, the, both coming from the Counseling Department. We have an extraordinary set of counselors, very dedicated and very innovative. The first I would like to share with you is this, the College Success Learning Community. This is the brainchild of John La Citra. I think several of you might know him. He is one beautiful person who has as his commitment over the past many, many years, over the nine years that I have been here certainly, to focus on the underserved and the underprepared student. He created, created this program actually in partnership with the Basic Skills Faculty. So at its core, you have a, um, Counseling One course, which teaches the basic, uh, study skills and helps them prepare with their academic plan. But in addition, they have reading, basic skills reading, and basic skills math. Just as importantly as that, they have a cohort that they're working with. This cohort has made this particular course, this particular learning community incredibly successful. So I bring that to your attention, and next, another faculty member I want to highlight, and that is Parisa Sultani. Just like John La Citra, she saw within, uh, our growing population of students, a real need, and that need was, could be expressed as the gap that goes from high school to the college itself. During that time, right there, she created what is called the Summer Bridge Program. Again, working with students who are underprepared, underrepresented, she built this program, which at its core too, also has two college, uh, studies, well, I guess they're counseling, called Counseling, uh, One and Four now, but the focus is on study skills and critical thinking. What is amazing, and you've already heard a lot of statistics tonight, but this particular cohort has a retention rate of eighty-nine percent. Quite honestly, I don't think you would find that retention rate even in the finest of universities. But that is associated with this one program, this one innovation of a very committed counselor, Parisa Sultani. Shifting gears again, I want to talk to you about four elements of the Veterans Program. This is a program that's dear to my heart, and one of the creators of the program is sitting in our audience, and that is Daryl Cox. There he is, right there. Why our program is extraordinary is because the veterans themselves shaped this program. So those of us who are the administrators blessed to be able to work with these students have helped in the ways that we can, but more than anybody else, it has been the students themselves, the veterans, who have step by stepped formed our Veterans Program, which by the way, is growing exceedingly rapidly. As a first part of this, the Veterans Orientation, which you see listed there, again, that was created by the veterans, had the first, this year, first veteran to, uh, Vets to College Symposium. This became for all of our new vets, a time of debriefing, a time of showing them what services exist at our college, a time of pointing out who they could turn to and trust. Now, a second component which you see there is the Vet to Vet mentoring. Unless you see it happening, I don't know if you could really appreciate just the incredibleness of it. They have taken a space which now they call the War Room. It sounds pretty dramatic, but the War Room isn't the fields that they have come from. It's a different kind of field where they sit opposite each other and hammer it out to provide the mentoring that they need, the tutoring that they need to be successful. Through this kind of process, what's happening is they're shifting gears from the military life to the civilian life, and only they have that ability to actually help one another to be successful in that way. These young men and women are so amazingly committed to be successful, you can find them, it's bad for me to say probably, just about any time of the night in that War Room. It's incredible. Another two points of the Veteran Program that I want to point out. Has to do with the Academic Planning Course. Again, this was a marriage of the counselors with the veterans. As I said, we have an incredible group of counselors. This particular, uh, course has all of the normal academic planning, um, elements to it, but in addition, that since it's a particular cohort, they focus on post-traumatic stress disorder. They focus on the services that are available to our veterans, and they point out how to receive those services. Now, separate from the curriculum itself, what happens is you have a cohort again, a cohort of young men and women who understand each other through the experience they've walked through and now have the support in one setting. Lastly, I want to mention the Veterans Club, and though that might seem like, well, what does that have to do with student success? And yet I've mentioned the cohort, and again, I want to point it out, but what's happened in this Veterans Club, which is, by the way, one of the most active clubs on campus, is that it's not simply the social piece of it, but it is that, it has become an educational arm for the campus in the sense of helping all of us understand what their experience is. So the veterans are there in an unusual way. They are there as our students, and we are all working with them, but they are there also as our teachers in a profound way, and frankly, I have never been so touched in all my life as I have this past year, working as closely as I have with those veterans. It has been an honor, and on that note, I thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. As you've heard many times tonight, uh, student success requires many, many avenues of engagement or contact, and it also means that students need to be able to start a program, uh, they need to make sure that they get the courses that they need in that program and move on persistently into the next semester to completion. Uh, we do have a very strong, uh, program at Irvine Valley College, designed to coordinate the scheduling, um, activities of all the programs on the campus. I meet three times a year with our Instructional Council, and we work very, very hard to ensure that the schedule of offerings at Irvine Valley College are coordinated. We're moving to an automated multi-year schedule planning so a student can know, one year from now, will I be able to get that Capstone course in, uh, Computer Science or another program? Uh, we have a series, a collection of about five right now, uh, success centers, six if you include our library that has one of the largest number of, uh, computers per student headcount in the state. Uh, we're going to be adding at least thirty more computers to the over one hundred that are already there this coming year. We have a well-developed Basic Skills Program. The technology support in our Library Resources Center has fifty-four state-of-the-art computers designed in part to support students who are taking online courses. Often they're on campus and they need a good computer to do that, or they are taking a course that has curriculum within that course that requires, um, the latest software on the computers, they can go to this center and use those computers. And in addition, we have, uh, our Academic Affairs Committee that has organized one of the most effective that I've ever seen, one of the most effective, uh, faculty professional development programs, uh, in the community college system. Our Student Success Centers represent many, many years statewide and nationwide of the student learning movement as opposed to a teaching movement. What it does is it puts the emphasis on, uh, learning on the student, and of course, faculty and administration are, uh, keen partners in that enterprise. What does a success center do? It provides students with a place to go to engage their professor. It's a critical partnership between their college courses and the support curriculum designed for the transfer and CTE courses. It helps them learn better, more skilled, it's a place to go for a conversation about how to learn. Uh, students are encouraged to focus on the process of learning and become more successful, we think, as a result. Our Writing Center is one of the, uh, most well-established on campus, and this is Professor Kay Riles, who you've met before. She is, uh, one of the Faculty of the Year Award Winners in the County of Orange, and you may recognize Bill Halbermill behind her, and, uh, some other dignitaries from Irvine Valley College in support of Kay in getting that award. Now, it's best probably to learn about, uh, what a Writing Center is by, uh, hearing it from the faculty themselves, so I have a very short clip to show you.
At Irvine Valley College is an instructional unit of the Department of English within the School of Humanities and Languages. The concept of center instruction was part of the original plan for IVC when the college opened in nineteen seventy-nine. While over the past thirty years, other centers on campus were phased out as philosophies changed and technology advanced, the Faculty of English remained committed to the focus of the Writing Center, and that is conference instruction. In the center, students meet in conference with English instructors in order to receive feedback on assignments that they are writing for their classes. When students and instructors meet, the students provide the written assignment directions from their classroom instructors, and the conference instructor works with these expectations in order to provide feedback on the student's writing. This feedback comes in the form of questions, advice, brief lessons, demonstrations of language use, and suggestions for revision. There are two ways that students can be eligible for these conferences. The first is by enrolling in Writing Two Eighty. Writing Two Eighty is the co-requisite writing conference course for all students enrolled in Writing Two O One and Writing Three O One. That is to say, all students enrolled in Writing Two O One and Three O One must also enroll in Writing Two Eighty. In order to receive credit for Writing Two Eighty, students must spend no less than twenty-four hours in the Writing Center and participate in four formal conferences. The criteria and guidelines for these formal conferences are contained in this website. The second way that a student can be eligible to confer with English instructors in the Writing Center is by enrolling in Writing One Eighty. Writing One Eighty is open to students enrolled in one or more of the twenty-two lecture courses listed in the class schedule. In order to receive credit in Writing One Eighty, students must spend no less than twenty-four hours in the Writing Center. Enrollment in these writing conference courses also gives students access to the Writing Center computers and print system, to reference texts, and to a large, well-lit room conducive to study. Each semester, over eight hundred students enroll in the Writing Conference and make use of the services in the Writing Center. My office is located in the Writing Center, and I invite you to stop by and become familiar with the center and its instructional services.
Professor Thomas retired last year, but her legacy lives on, obviously, and, uh, let's see, let me go back to the previous, I, one of the, when I first toured the center, she told me that good writing begins with a conversation, and that is a formula for success that they, they do follow. Uh, the English faculty teach in there, and it's a very crowded place. Uh, in addition to the Writing Center, the Math Success Center is built around two ideas. One is supplemental instruction to help students learn, uh, transfer collegiate-level courses ever so much better, and also the Basic Skills Tutoring Curriculum is taught in the center, and it is already in search of a larger space, they are very, very crowded there. But we think that this is a very important avenue for student engagement in learning, uh, how to do mathematics, uh, better and be more successful. Our newest center, our newest success center is the Language Acquisition Center, and it's a place where, uh, ESL students and students of world languages can come together and practice the languages, Chinese, Spanish, French, and so forth, and also learn about one another's culture. So this is, uh, this just opened this semester, and it is growing very, very quickly. In addition to that, we have a Reading Center, and you might ask, well, don't students know how to read? And of course, they think they do, and they do know how to read and, and express the words and so forth, but we all know that reading involves much more than the ability to pronounce the words correctly. What do the words mean? The vocabulary building, the comprehension, and the speed are things that we find that many of our students can get help with very quickly and move on and be very successful in the transfer courses. In addition to that, reading novels versus reading textbooks are, is a very different skill set, and one of the things we do in our Reading Center is teach students how to read a textbook, it's very, uh, very much a technical skill. General tutoring, particularly basic skills tutoring, is conducted in our library in the Learning, uh, Center of our library, which also has the Computer Learning Center, and study skills development are taught there as well as, uh, tutoring in basic skills, English and, uh, mathematics. This space has, they've outgrown it, they are going to be moving to the Library Resource Center along with the computers that I told you about earlier, fifty-four state-of-the-art computers in a five thousand square foot facility in our Business Science Technology Innovation Center building. I don't have a slide for the library, but the library is undergoing a lot of refurbishment this year, and the books are moving upstairs, that's leaving space for thirty more computers on the ground floor, as well as, uh, hotspots for their laptops and other, uh, computing devices. The Student Success Task Force, the Town Hall Meeting was here very, very recently, uh, has given us a lot of food for thought, and one of the, um, most interesting notions is how to incentivize student success, and of course, studies nationwide, uh, the most successful incentivization is give them a refund on their tuition if they complete the course successfully. That's been proven to be very effective financially. We're not allowed to do that, we don't have the resources to do that in California, so we are doing the next best thing, working with our foundation to, uh, develop scholarships and endowments centered around or designed around, uh, aspects of student. or designed around aspects of student success specifically. In addition to that, we can work with our Admissions and Records Department to develop some priority registration avenues that incentivize students, thinking particularly of a selected cohort of transfer-ready high school students, many of whom are coming to us anyway, but get them in the English and the math courses in the first semester so that they can go on to the transfer electives and be able to write those essays in history and philosophy and art history courses ever so much better. We have a lot going on at Irvine Valley College, and we're very proud of it. Do you have any questions for us?
Trustee Melchiker.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say that I'm one really incredibly proud trustee because hearing about all the wonderful, wonderful, I don't even know which program to focus on, but hearing about all the wonderful programs we have at both colleges for our students, and particularly right now, seeing the pictures of the faculty working one-on-one with the students. Where else do you offer so much one-on-one help to students? I don't, I don't know of any other place that offers this incredible program, and I've heard wonderful things about all the programs and know, for instance, that the writing program at Irvine Valley College is just really well-known as being just top-notch and wonderful, and the Vet Program and just so many other programs. I just have to mention, I know Vice President Gwen Plano was speaking, and she always speaks from the heart, and she speaks honestly and ethically, and I noticed tonight on the agenda that she's retiring, but she's, she's being so ethical that she's, she's announcing her retirement now, and she's not retiring until July 1st. I'm sure that's to allow us plenty of time to pick someone else in her place, and that she has really big feet, really large shoes to fill. So, I was just kidding about big feet. You have, you have really large shoes to fill. So, we're really going to miss you, but we're glad you're going to be around the rest of the year. We're delighted, and we love you, all of you. So, I, I myself really love to hear about the programs that we offer to our students because sometimes we don't get an opportunity to learn about the programs unless we go out to the classrooms ourselves and look. So this, kind of brought this to us, and I know it kind of took a lot of time to hear it all, but it's just really important for us to know what a difference we make in our students' lives, and so I thank all of you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Pendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, when I was there for the Veterans Day ceremony, I was allowed to have a tour of the Veteran's Center there at, at the Student Center, and very impressive how they've made very good use of space and are there for each other. And, you know, the slides kind of show that, but it really is a powerful experience to be in there and see how proud they are to have served the country and be there for us, and then turn around and try and make, you know, make that transition into civilian life, which is sometimes very difficult, but they're there for each other, and that war room is pretty cool that they, and I actually got to learn something. They had a nice little pie chart on pre-calculus that I kind of borrowed from my daughter's experience. Yeah, it was, it was very nice.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from trustees? All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it, and it was very.
Thank you.
Very exciting, although a little bit long. Okay. We're now at the consent calendar. Hooray. All right. Do I have any trustees wishing to pull items off the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'm going to pull 5.12 so that we can help trustee Fuentes if he would like to abstain since it's about him. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Trustee Melchiker, second. Trustee Pendergast, seconded it. All right. Any comments? Seeing none, let's vote on all of the consent calendar items except 5.12. All right. It carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. So we'll vote on 5.12, which is authorization of payment to trustee absent from board meeting, meeting. Moved by trustee Lang, seconded by trustee Melchiker. Seeing no one wishing to address the item, let's vote on the item. All right. And matter carries unanimously with one abstention, one absent vote, and one student advisory vote. And we are now at our action items, and we have done 6.1, so we'll go to 6.2, Irvine Valley College Life Science Building Change Order Request. And I guess President Rockmore will present this. Moved by trustee, trustee Pendergast and seconded by trustee Lang. Would you like to present it, please?
I would love to, however, change orders are not usually reviewed with us, so it would go to.
Oh, Deborah, okay. I'm sorry. Deborah, okay. Our Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
Yes. This is change order number two for this particular project. As you can recall, you previously approved a change order for a decrease in amount of the project by $23,198. This particular revision is for an increase of $3,773, taking the total project amount to $11,367,862, which is still below the original contract amount of $11,387,287 due to change order number one, so we're recommending approval.
All right. Any questions concerning this item? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Oh, matter carries unanimously with one absent trustee and student advisory yes vote. 6.3, this is the District Academic Personnel Action, regular items. No changes from Vice Chancellor. All right. Moved by trustee Lang, seconded by trustee Meldout. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with one student advisory yes and one trustee absent. 6.4, Classified Personnel Actions.
There's no changes on this item, but if it'd be okay with you, Madam President, I'd like to kind of point out a couple of new features we have on here to help it to be easier to understand. We hope for the board of trustees. If you look on page five.
Yes.
On page five, the, we changed some of the methodology. We're trying to make this clear for the board as we go through because I want to make certain that we have some continuity, and if there's any confusion, we try to address them within the same item. So on page five, you'll see on D1, we define the item, which is a reorganization. You'll see the word reorganize in the second line. We refer to the part of Education Regulation Title V in that same section, which talks about reorganization. And then you'll see 1A, we eliminate a position. 1B, we're going to replace a position by eliminating another one, and then we establish a position in the same item. And then if you turn the page, we're still on the same section over there because it's still the reorganization of admissions and records. You'll see there, reclassify Vincent, and we're going to go from an admissions and records specialist to admissions and records specialist two. So we're covering the same thing in the same item. You see the person moving as well as the position change. Let's go down to the next one, too. You can see, hopefully, we got a rhythm here, and I want to make sure the board's comfortable with this change. 1C, we're going to replace the admissions and records specialist by eliminating the position, and then we're going to, then we're going to establish a new position, a records, admissions and records specialist two. Okay? So we eliminate a position, and we're actually changing the position into something different, so from a one to a two, and then we're going to reclassify in the same thing underneath it, the person that was in the old position, admissions and records specialist one, and turn him into an admissions and records specialist two. So we're trying to sit down and make them stuck together so it's easier to understand. Hopefully, you'll see that there's several items. We did that, so whenever we do a reorganization or a reclass, we're going to put them in this section over here. I just want to make certain that the board, if you like this format, I'll keep it up. Last session, there was some confusion, and my motto is, you talk, we listen. So hopefully, I listened well. How did, did the format better?
All right. Sounds wonderful. Trustee Melchiker.
Yeah, I just want to say, I was at the district office all day today, meeting with different people, and I also met with, with you, and you went through it with me, and I, it was very confusing at the last meeting, but, but it's, it's much clearer now, so I really appreciate you doing that, and I'm ready to approve it tonight. And I really thank you for listening to us, and I just know from now on, everything's going to be real clear. Thank you.
Okay. I believe we have a motion and a second on this, right? Okay.
One more thing.
All right. Go ahead.
We also, if there's going to be a reclass or reorgan an area with three or more positions, we're going to try to put in a diagram for you as well. So the very last page of this section, you'll see we have a diagram from admissions and records from IVC prepared by Vice President Plano. It's kind of self-explanatory, I hope, but there's actually cost items and so on, and so we're going to try to sit down and provide that. So there's a large number of positions. We're going to present it in words and also graphically if possible. Okay?
Thank you. And who do, all right, let's, who did the motion if we didn't? Let's have one. All right. Trustee Pendergast moved it.
I'll second it.
Trustee Melchiker seconded it. Seeing no other comments or questions, let's vote on the item. All right. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and a student advisory yes vote. We are now at reports. So we will start with Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College speakers, list of speakers and events. Any questions or comments on 7.1? Seeing none, we will move to 7.2, and that's the Basic Aid Report. Questions or comments on the Basic Aid Report? Seeing no one wishing to speak or address the, trustee Lang.
Yes, I think that recently there was some articles that appeared in the Orange County Register that caused some concern and consternation on the part of the trustees, which I think the chancellor has tried to lay at rest a bit, but I'm hoping that my, this might be an appropriate place to comment on what's been happening along those lines.
I'm not sure that, how do you tie that in with basic aid? And we did have earlier a report coming back, but.
True.
Yes, our Vice Chancellor.
Sure. I was prepared to talk on my verbal report anyway, so I can just clarify.
Okay.
Yesterday, many of you have read the article in the Orange County Register, and it was regarding the county holding back $73.5 million in property taxes due to state budget reductions to the county and the receipt of less revenues that the county was going to receive from vehicle license fees, VLF. And they were citing the authorization through State Revenue Tax Code, Section 97.70, and they were going to actually reduce property taxes that are allocated to school districts throughout the county, K-12s as well as community college districts. And it was very unclear in that article how this was going to impact us, if at all. Basically, what's happening is those K-12 districts as well as community college districts who receive ERAF, E-R-A-F is the acronym, Educational Revenue Augmentation Funds, are going to be impacted by this. And how the county is doing this is they are doing this by creating a negative ERAF allocation of property taxes to the tune of $73.5 million to these districts. Now, there's only about a little bit over $10 million worth of ERAF available, so it's creating a negative ERAF situation for these districts, and that would require the state to make up for this negative property tax amount through the state funding formula. I wanted to make sure that I let you know that as a basic aid district, we do not qualify for ERAF, and therefore would not be subject to the negative ERAF situation. And I did get confirmation of this yesterday through the county from a variety of sources just to make sure that I was double-checking and triple-checking my facts. We wanted to alleviate any concerns or speculation that this Orange County Register article may have caused yourselves or others, and you can be assured that we will be diligently monitoring this situation closely to ensure there are no other impacts to our district, and we want to ensure that we are collecting 100% of any property tax receipts from the county owed to our local district. So that's the situation with the ERAF and the county situation with $73.5 million.
Chancellor Porter.
One last thing. I wanted to emphasize the fact that we don't, we're not eligible for ERAF.
That's correct. We are not eligible.
So this report doesn't really impact us because they're dealing with districts who happen to receive this revenue source. We haven't, as far as I know, we've never been eligible for it, so it doesn't impact us, and that was the reason for the communication yesterday.
And we are not eligible because?
I really don't know.
Basically makes, it's, it's hard to explain, but it makes up a difference in funding, and it affects districts that are getting state funding allocation.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Trustee Lang, does that help, help you out? Okay. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you. I'd like to turn to page one of two, and Chancellor Gary, item number one under approved projects, 2005, 2006 allocation, per salary schedule, restructure, a total of $4,245,000. Could you just refresh my memory and talk me through that line there? My understanding is that we have a board policy of, in concept, that we don't use.
Where are you?
I'm on.
Line one.
Line one.
Basic aid.
Page two.
Page two of the 7.2 item.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that we don't use basic aid dollars for one-time salary expenditures. So how is it that that is there? And just refresh my memory and concept.
My recollection is that during those negotiations, we're having a difficult time to come to agreement, and in the resolution of it, the board had agreed to use for one time, for that one year only, the four and a half million dollars for that resolution of salary negotiations, and then the starting the following year, basic aid was no longer used for that, so it was a one-time occurrence. It was somewhat controversial among the trustees at the time, but, but that's what happened.
That's a matter of record, come, gone, done, and doesn't affect us for the future.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We will move to 7.3. All right. Any, that's on facilities plan status report. Any comments or questions about that one? Seeing none, we will move on to 7.4, quarterly financial status report. Seeing no comments or questions. 7.5, quarterly investment report. Seeing no comments. We are going to 7.6, and that's the academic year non-resident tuition fees for foreign and out-of-state students. Chancellor, do you want to make a report on that or comment, or any questions or comments about the report? Trustee Lang.
I guess my only comment was, we ran through the numbers on this and came up with a higher calculated, or higher calculated capital outlay and application fee numbers, or estimated But in the bottom, it looked like we were continuing with the same fee amounts, and I realize this is not final yet, but I thought maybe somebody might wish to make a comment about that.
Our Chancellor Porter.
Basically, what this is, is it just provides preliminary information for the purposes of primarily the students. The associated student government needs to have at least some sense of where things stand at this point in time, and it's something that's annually conducted. Now, what isn't in this information is other, other things that we do do between now and the time that we bring this back to you, and that is, we, we look at the CPI index, we check with our peer institutions and look at their particular rates and where they might be coming in at, and we have conversations internally with the colleges as well as the chancellor about how we want to set our fees, and the students are involved in that conversation and before we bring back a recommendation. So the starred item at the bottom isn't intended to be a proposed information yet. It's basically incomplete, but this is how we presented this information to you in the past, so it does look a little bit misleading when you look at the two figures.
Trustee Pendergast? I'm sorry. Are you finished?
Yes.
All right. Trustee Pendergast.
Yeah, it is a pet peeve of mine as a teacher when I have student clock watchers, but I would like to make a motion to extend the meeting till 10 o'clock.
Oh, can we just make it 9:45?
Can I make it 9:35, but I don't think that's going to happen, so if we shoot for the moon and comes short, I'm good.
All right, I won't object. Seconded by trustee Philchecker. All right, all in favor, a vote please. Trustee Fuentes, we need your vote. Carries unanimously with one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. All right, are we finished with 7.6? Any more comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll go to 7.7, and this is the retiree trust fund report from the chancellor. Any questions, trustee Fuentes?
I was just hoping that you could walk us through this with some language, Ken.
Yes, the OEPED trust report was presented to the board last month. And what we normally do is present the quarterly report, and September was a particularly volatile month. And when you looked at the report as presented, which is in attachment B, exhibit B, you can see that through the month of December, I mean, September, there was a decrease in market value for the OEPED trust from $65 million, which was at the end of the fiscal year, which was June 30th of 2011, to $59 million, which is a significant decrease. And there was questions from the board, as you should have had questions, and wanted to bring back a more detailed report to you so you could understand what the history has been with the OEPED trust and how the market value has been going up and down. So what is included in this report is a couple-page memo from Benefit Trust showing you that subsequent to September, at the end of October, for instance, the value of the trust went up to $63 million, and that was a 7.5% gain from the end of September, just in that one month. And again, we're in this trust, this trust is intended for the long haul, and that we're monitoring the situation and the investments are handled very responsibly.
Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions? Seeing none? Oh, trustee Fuentes, go ahead.
When do you anticipate that we would see a next report on this? Is it something we're going to be seeing monthly?
What we normally do with the OEPED trust is it's quarterly. Although I did check today, just to give you a little bit of information as well, as of today, it was at $62.8 million. So as you can see, it went up, it went down a little bit from the end of October through this time period. So we actually monitor it daily internally within the accounting department. But what we do is don't present it to you except for on a quarterly basis.
Would you like to see it more frequently, trustee Fuentes, in these particular troubling times we're in?
I think that it is worthy of a closer monitoring by the board. I think we'd be facing some people camping on the lawn if we had a few bad months.
So would you like it to come back monthly? I wouldn't object to having that. I don't know if we need a motion or if we can just give that direction. Any other trustees?
It's just an item for information, so we can bring it back monthly. It actually is no problem whatsoever. As you know, we're monitoring by the day.
That would be great, I think. All right?
Thank you.
Very good. Now we are at our reports from our constituent groups, or, I'm sorry, our, start with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Jane Wall, Saddleback College Academic Senate, in the interest of time and the desire to see trustee Pendergast on Movember.com, no report.
All right, and Lewis Long, our faculty association president.
I will also forego a report for this evening.
Thank you. And Urban Valley College Academic Senate president.
Yes, ma'am, very short report, just a couple of things, just to let you know that we are underway in our registration for our spring 2012 courses, and they're filling quickly. So we're underway and busy for our work after the holidays. We're continuing 10 hires that you were detailed on at the last meeting. Just to remind you that we have closed down our IVC to IVC lectures for the fall, but we have a series of five new ones coming up in the spring. So mark your calendars, and I'll be giving you more on that next time. Myself as academic senate president and cabinet member, Dr. Stephen Rochford, who's also the chair of academic affairs, both attended our state academic senate fall plenary in San Diego two weeks ago. And just to let you know that the state academic senate is very involved in this, at this time, in student support and student success task force. And Sacramento State's working directly with us on that. Finally, December 12, December 2nd through December 4th is our fall 2011 dance concert put on by our dance program. And it will be a series of works that were choreographed by both student and faculty choreographers, so mark your calendars.
Great.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Great, thank you. All right, and our associate vice chancellor of economic development.
Thank you, good evening. Just a few short comments. I'd like to say regarding ATEP, I think this has probably been our most productive 12-month period as we look at actually measurable progress and things that you can see being accomplished at ATEP. The first two phases of demo are done, 28 buildings are gone and cleared, and Brandy has a job walk on December 1st to do the contractor walks for two more, the last two buildings on our property. And those will probably start and progressing in demo in January or such. And then also, not actually part of our projects, but I think an interesting for the Tustin Legacy Area is that the city of Tustin has begun building the Tustin Ranch Road, which is a significant north-south conduit through the middle of the Tustin Legacy property. And at the same time, they've also, the city council has approved a new implementation strategy where they're actually interviewing a number of contractors to start doing, again, finally, a significant development of residential areas in the Tustin Legacy Area, which are of course going to have a huge positive impact on ATEP, especially as we progress with new buildings in the future to fill that campus. So that's pretty exciting. And then lastly, and quite interesting to us, is that Tustin has, finally, Tuesday night, they hired their next city manager, Mr. Jeff Parker. And vice chancellor Deborah Fett Simmons and I are going to actually go to the Tustin annual mayor's breakfast, Thanksgiving's breakfast tomorrow morning, and we hope to meet Jeff Parker and establish a relationship, again, with him and other staff so we can continue to move forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Okay, great. And our president of IVC.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things to highlight, but first off, the accreditation visiting team is now gone. And I know I speak for the entire college when I say a big thank you to the chancellor and the board of trustees and joining with the colleges and getting us through that. A lot of hard work in a very short period of time, and all indications, I think Todd and I agree, are very good for an excellent outcome on that. The next thing I'd like to highlight is one of our professors, IVC psychology professor, Carrie Tucker, has received an award. It's called the Wayne Wheaton Teaching Excellence Award for Outstanding Teaching in the Two-Year Colleges. So we may be bringing something back in that regard in a future meeting, but we congratulate her for that. Also, one thing I would like to thank Vice President Pendergast for coming to our veterans' ceremony. He had the opportunity to witness one of our veterans. His name is Andy Nikitin, and he's originally from the Ukraine, and, but is now a Navy CB builder first class and also one of our music majors. But he still carries a very heavy Ukrainian accent as he bolted out "God Bless America" and the Navy's anthem, "Anchors Away." And it was just very heartrending to hear him do that. It was actually excellent, I thought. Not complete, but excellent. Then just a couple of things quickly. If you haven't seen our dance program, I highly recommend it. You have a card on your table. This Friday is Perspectives. That will be excellent. But coming in December is something interesting, is that I saw one of the dances, it was called "The Door." It had a great impression on me, but I didn't write a poem about it. Why would I say that? That's because somebody else did, and that's David Bouquet here. And so they are going to choreograph his poem at one of these December events here, and we're just setting when that's going to be. So kind of an interesting side, like the talent that David has. So the second, you want to see it on the second? And then finally, our holiday event at the campus, you also have this up on the dais, December 8th at 2:30. This will be really more of a hot chocolate, hot tea, sweets and fruit and a gathering there with raffles and whatnot, so please attend. It'd be great to have you there.
Thank you, great. President Burnett, Saddleback College.
Thank you, Madam President. First ditto Glenn, what Glenn said about accreditation. Congratulations to all of you, our board, our chancellor, our two colleges and our district services who did an outstanding job. And we were, all indications, as Glenn said, are that we will get a complete A for our efforts, so thank you. I also wanted to thank the chancellor and the board for holding the first open, the campus forum on our campus, and we greatly appreciate it. It's gotten grave, I mean, really good reviews by everybody on campus, so thank you. Student Success Task Force, the town hall was a big success. I don't know if you've seen it already, they've already taken to at heart the things that were said here, and they've made some changes already to the state task force because the next day they met up in Sacramento. Tonight's presentation from Saddleback College, we gave two examples of successful programs on our campus, nursing and our athletics. Our goal is to make all of our students be as successful, and all of our programs provide the similar types of services and support, because we all know those are the models that we have where we can be successful. As you also saw, a lot of stuff in the Student Success Task Force, the 2020 vision, all the things that we know about and based on our programs and elsewhere, we know what to do, we just need to do it. And we look forward to working with you and everybody else to make that happen so we can increase our completion rates amongst other things. I don't know if you've heard about it, but on December 7th, the night of your event, we will be, our associate student government, so hopefully Joseph, I'm not stealing your thunder here too much, but they're going to be sponsoring a talent show to benefit Audra DePadova, who is our director of student development son, who has brain cancer, Max, and they're all coming together to host a benefit to help him and his family do that. So I would encourage you all to be there. It's an SSC 212, and maybe Joseph can tell us what time it is. And then also to their invitation, the next day, December, I'm sorry, next week, December 13th, is when we have an invitation up here for our annual holiday party as well. We welcome you and your families to attend. And other than that, have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Our vice chancellor of technology and our poem writer.
No report this evening.
Okay. All right, vice chancellor Bouquet of human resources.
Yes, if you want to see the poem, it'll be this Friday and also December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. So it's a very short thing, it's not the most fabulous thing, maybe I thought it was really cool when I wrote it, so it'll be all fun. One thing out of accreditation, accreditation, the district really came together on a major basis. But a lot of us present that work here at the college, but one special thing that we're going forward with is Lisa Davis Allen and I will be presenting at the AKA Conference, the Association of California Community College Administrators, on building new bridges of communication based upon the model that we developed through accreditation. We think it's good enough to brag about. So frankly, I think accreditation that will be living the benefits of the result of this report for years to come, so it's very positive.
How exciting.
I'd just like to add, he needed a good soil, that's why he's called the Accurate Report.
Okay. And our vice chancellor of business services.
Yes, just two other quick things to add to Randy's report. If things progress smoothly over the next few days, we will be finalizing the county and district land exchange agreement, finally, including the accompanying SEQA document, and bringing it to the board of trustees for approval with the public hearing at the December 5th board meeting. So we're keeping our fingers crossed because we're very, very, very close. So you might see postings in the Orange County Register next week for this particular hearing. We'll know within the next few days. It's just down to the, a couple exhibit stage at this point to get it ready. Also, the audit committee of the board met today with staff and the audit firm, and we'll bring in the annual financial reports and the audit for fiscal year end, June 30th, 2011, to the board for their review and approval at the December 5th meeting. That's all.
Great, thank you. And our IVC president classified senate, Dennis Forden.
In the interest of time, I'll just pass, a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And our CSCE president, G. Dixon.
In the interest of time. Congratulations to the faculty for settling their contract, and hopefully we'll be right behind them.
Great.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, and our president of Saddleback College, classified senate, Donna.
Thank you, Don Minio, and I do see the timer this time, so I won't be that long.
Oh, okay.
As you all know, we were taking in some food donations and card donations for our veterans, and we actually made a total of 38 donations for 38 families. I can't say they were all baskets because we only had money for 24 baskets, so every, all 14 that was left over went into tote bags. But people were very excited to get the tote bags. In fact, one gentleman, it doesn't matter what the size of a person is, he actually hugged everyone in the room because he was so surprised that the basket was so plentiful with food. He actually said there was more food in the basket than is on his shelves at home.
Wow.
We also included a $25 gift card, except for the families that had more than four people in the family. We included a $50 gift card. The classified senate donated over $350, but actually we collected gift cards over $800. Thank you to Tracy McConnell in CTE, now she's in Business Science Division, she just was transferred. Kathy Beers, who's in Fine Arts, she also helped lead the project. And then to all the Lees that were in each and every division, because they actually made sure that the food wasn't taken and the gift cards were secured. Thank you to Social and Behavioral Sciences, they actually donated more food than any other division, so we wanted to recognize them. And also, just to show that working together does help different people, we classified other groups have donated their unused vacation and sick time to Audra. And one person actually donated almost over a month of time.
Wow, that's great.
Deleting their own time almost, but it's for the better good and helping out our friends and family at the college.
Great, thank you. And our Saddleback College ASG president, Joseph Assing.
I have a few things to report. I'll go through a few of them quickly. We had a very successful food drive as well. Our turkey drive concludes tomorrow, but we have just about all of our donations collected, and we're going to have a good amount of extras to donate to the Second Harvest Food Bank, so we won't just be helping families that we committed to, so I'm happy about that. We have adopt a family starting. It's where students registered in our EOPS program can register their children to receive gifts. The age ranges between newborns to, I believe last year the oldest was about 16. They just give like a wish list of what they would like, and then different people can adopt the children. And then for next semester, we're working on our spring retreat right now and also planning for the events for spring. One of our clubs, Psi Beta and Psychology Club, is having the Mental Health Awareness Week from the 28th to the 1st of this month, and that's going to be a great event. They have a lot of speakers coming out and a lot of different co-programming with various organizations. Family Night was on Monday night, and that was very successful. There were a lot of high school seniors in attendance, so I'd say good job to our outreach department on that. For next semester, unfortunately, there's a required class that I have to take that's only offered one section between the two colleges, and it's 7:00 to 9:50 on Monday night. So I'll be, I'll be attending the first hour of our meetings, then our vice president, Austin DiSoto.
Oh, great.
Will be attending the entirety of all of the meetings. And then to touch back on the Supermax Talent Show, it's on December 7th at 6:00 PM, and like a couple people touched on, Audra DePadova has had an immense impact on our campus with the students and the faculty. Of course, you can tell by the time that's been donated to her. So I think that that's a great way to show appreciation for her family and to help them start off their nonprofit organization, the Math Love Project. And that's it for my report.
Wonderful, thank you. That's the end of our reports, and tonight we would like to close our meeting in memory of Tom Yott, who was an active member of the Saddleback College Foundation Board for many years. His contributions and support of the college and community will always be appreciated and remembered. Thank you and good night.